We've got internet problems. No problem, thank you. Good evening, councillors, officers and members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's council meeting. I declare this meeting open at two minutes past six. My name is councillor Julie Williams and I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and I'm also tonight's chairperson. It is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting. This meeting has been scheduled hybrid and the meeting will also to any members of the public who are participating virtually this evening. This meeting can also, which has been livestreamed and recorded, it can also be made available to the council website as soon as practical after the meeting or sometime during the meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners, the Warranjerry, the Warrarong people, the traditional owners of the land and pay my respects to elders, past, present and emerging. I recognise their continuing connection to the land, water and culture. I would also like to extend my respect to all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who are joining this meeting in the council chambers or online. I would like to firstly acknowledge our councillors and officers this evening. I have councillor Suzanne Newton, our deputy mayor, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Tim Lawrence, councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Lena Messina and councillor Susan Rennie. Our officers we have this evening, I have Peter Smith, our CEO, I have Jodie Watson, our general manager, Rachel Olivia as our general manager, Kylie Bennetts, Vanessa Petrie and Bobby Bright. I also have and I'm pleased to welcome Yvonne, our manager governance and strategy this evening from Mary Beck, who has joined us this evening to provide governance support and advice for tonight's council meeting. I would also like to pause a moment and say a big thank you to acknowledge one of our general managers of governance and engagement, Jodie Watson, as tonight is her last council meeting. This council meeting, she will be taking on a new role at Melbourne Water and I'd like to say a big thank you on behalf of councillors and staff sincerely for her dedication, her service, her frank and fearless advice and her contagious smile that she always seems to have for the last three years and her important contribution that she's made to this organisation and to Darabben community. So thank you and we wish you all the best for your future endeavours. I do not have any apologies this evening, so I'll just move over to our next item, which is disclosures and conflicts of interest. Councillors and officers, do you have a conflict of interest that you'd like to declare? Councillor Hannan?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to declare a conflict on item 9.2, which involves advocacy towards an agency close related to my employer, so I'll step out for that item, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Are there any other councillors or officers who would like to declare a conflict of interest or disclose? Thank you. I would like to move on to the next item, which is a mover, I need a mover and a second to adopt the minutes from the ordinary council meeting that was held on June 26, which was the budget evening. Thank you to councillors. Do I have a mover for that item? Councillor Lawrence and I have councillor Greco as a second. I'll put that to vote. All those in favour? That has been voted unanimously, thank you. Cancelled occupational health and safety, that we have a responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. Due to the amount of community interest on the number of agenda items we have this evening, we have held and have to have and consider the best way to meet our responsibilities. As such, consistent with every council meeting that is held in the chamber, we have kept capacity of only 40 people this evening. In addition, due to the large number of questions and submissions, only those who have submitted a public question or submission will be provided priority seating in the chamber or in the conference room. So, public question time. I've allowed 30 minutes, however, if we go over the 30 minutes, I will ask for a procedural motion to extend that 30 minutes for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions will be taken from people in the gallery unless they have been submitted by 12pm today. You can only ask three questions and can only speak for up to two minutes, so kindly be mindful that it's question time. Questions relating to notice of motions, petitions and urgent business will not be accepted in accordance to the governance rules. For members of the public who have registered to ask questions in person, I will call your name when it's time. If I call your name and you do not respond, then I would take it that you're not in the gallery and that one of our officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will then provide a response. If you are in attendance in person, I will invite you to come to the lectern and to state your name and suburb and you can ask your question. Or if you're attending online, I will ask you to turn your camera on and microphone to speak. In line with our governance rules 15.47, so questions that are liked questions will be grouped together. The first person who submitted their liked question can ask their question. We will endeavour to provide a response that captures a holistic response to the theme of the questions. As I said, we have a number of questions this evening, I think it was over 30. We've had to combine it together with like for like. And we'll call out the names who've actually asked similar questions, so you know that your question is part of that response that will be answered this evening. The reason being that we've done it this way more so than normals, that we would not get through tonight's agenda. Otherwise, we would be going past the question time and we wouldn't be able to answer your question. I'll move over to the first person I have this evening. Is that Karen Bacon? Karen Bacon? Is Karen Bacon available? Is she in the gallery? Can you please step up and just state your name and suburb and you can kindly ask your question?
Okay, I'm Karen Bacon and I'm from Reservoir. Is that okay? Yep. My first question is, is Darabben City Council going to start patrolling Edwards Lake and issue infringements to owners of off-leash dogs? I'll just keep going. Yep. How many park patrols of Edwards Lake has Darabben City Council completed since the cygnets were killed by a dog in October 2022? And will Darabben City Council install permanent anti-vandal signage at Edwards Lake and other open spaces displaying on-leash requirements to protect the wildlife? Thank you.
Vanessa, I'll get you to answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question, Karen, and I'd also like to thank Libby and Belinda, Teresa, Rachel, Maureen, Andrea and Catherine for your questions as well this evening. Council's local laws officers conduct patrols throughout the entire municipality, including Edwards Lake. In response to the recent incident, we have increased patrols at Edwards Lake with a focus on both educating pet owners and also enforcing compliance. More generally, our local law offices are regularly engaged in educating and enforcing non-compliance, including matters relating to responsible pet ownership and other local laws. Park patrols are regularly carried out across the municipality. The frequency varies depending on available resources, seasonal factors, events and prioritisation of tasks. Our officers work to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our communities and wildlife. Council recently audited the signs at Edwards Lake to identify any gaps and in the short term, we will be installing additional temporary signs to reinforce dog-on-leash requirements. We'll also review long-term signage needs. I'd also like to share some information in response to similar questions that have been asked this evening. Council will start running responsible pet ownership workshops in October. Officers are working with the Darabben Domestic Animal Reference Group to develop a comprehensive education programme. And council will consider updating the environmental significance overlay after it has updated the creep mapping and policy and we're planning to undertake this work in '26 and '27. Regarding dog attacks, in the last financial year, there were two dog attacks at Edwards Lake and across Darabben, a total of 65 reports of dog attacks on persons and 54 reports of dog attacks on animals. And each incident is investigated as a priority and our actions vary based on the investigation's outcome. The revenue that we raise from pet registration is used for various essential services and programmes, including operating the Watjerring Animal Facility and education and research programmes. Regarding wildlife, council's local laws team have been working very closely with parks and open space to protect native wildlife at all our reserves across Darabben. If the community members do come across a sick or injured or orphaned animal, we encourage them to please contact Wildlife Victoria and you can find their details on their website.
Vanessa, can I just quickly ask, did you read out the people's names, who were they also responding to? Thank you. Okay, I have Serena O'Malley. Is Serena in the room? Thank you. Good evening, Serena.
Good evening, Mayor. In April this year, Friends of Wat Ganbo Park met with representatives of Darabben Council to discuss the installation of new wetlands in the park. The design is significantly different to what was proposed in the master plan, so we were invited to ask questions and were promised a written response from officers and/or an external consultant. Those questions were sent to Darabben Council on 26th of April 2023 and despite follow-up, there has not been a response. We're concerned that works may proceed before consultation takes place. When can we expect a response to our questions and further consultation?
Over to our officer in reference to that one. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you for your question, Serena. I am sorry you haven't had a response yet. The project team is working on that and I expect them to respond shortly. In the meantime, the manager of capital and major projects is available to discuss if you'd like to. The thing I can say is that for 2023/24, the scheduled work is finalisation of the design for the wetlands and so proceeding to construction would be considered for future years. So there's certainly time for engagement and we're planning engagement through the year ahead.
Thank you. According to the April 2023 municipal monitors report, Darabben Council has a 20% vacancy rate and has been forced to spend an estimated $600,000 dealing with poor councillor behaviour during the current term. What steps is Darabben Council taking to address the widespread perception that our council is a terrible place to work?
Over to our officer, Jodie. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Serena, and we do also acknowledge you have another question to come. I acknowledge that in the past 18 months, it's been a particularly challenging time for council. With the appointment of Peter Smith in October 2022, we have reviewed our council plan, our long-term financial plan and also considered our future investment in IT. As a values-led organisation, we're only as good as our people and we're working to establish an organisational strategy to focus our efforts and strengthen our service delivery.
Thank you and good luck on your new job. I'm sorry to see you going. Thanks. How much money is Darabben Council spending on external contractors to backfill staff who are taking industrial action when it could be finalising an enterprise agreement with fair conditions and a reasonable pay rise that addresses the current cost of living pressures?
Thanks for the question, Serena. A similar question was also asked by Philippa Bulk of Reservoir tonight. Council has engaged one agency to support us in continuing our waste service delivery to the community whilst staff have undertaken industrial action. We'll take this one to notice in terms of the cost impacts and get back to you both and we have a future response regarding enterprise agreement more broadly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Michael Ricardo? Okay, so Michael's not here, so we'll go to Tash Walk. Is Tash available? Yeah, I'll come back to him, but I'll just...
Thank you for your time and acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today. I'm here on behalf of workers at Darabben Council. The union is concerned that on review of the budget, that council staff are essentially bearing the brunt of budget tightening at Darabben. My first question is, the budget states that a $9.66 million surplus is projected this year. That's an increase from $8.6 million on last year's forecast and $11.54 million projected in '24/25. With this in mind, why do EA, so enterprise agreement, assumptions seem to be based on 80% of the rate cap in the budget? This appears to be an attempt to lock in an unfair rate that staff will not see a fair share of the increase in funds paid by ratepayers providing services so valued by the community, for instance, the park patrol's being referred to earlier. That's my first question.
You can keep, yeah. Ask all three questions.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Second question, are councillors aware of other mechanisms being asserted by senior council officers to drive down workers' terms and in effect make Darabben a less attractive place to work, such as freezing all industrial allowances except for one in the EA offer? This impacts all council workers performing ongoing valued work that might be, for instance, at unsociable hours impacting on their personal time and personal lives outside of work. It involves working in difficult circumstances like working in dust, mould, infected materials, et cetera, or has community values in a community like Darabben, like utilising languages other than English. That's my second question. The third question is, have councillors explored in full detail the finance challenges and accept officers' statements that there isn't enough money available? If we all agree that staffing for frontline public service delivery is important, and I think that we do and I hope that we do, and a critical part of council's function, have they considered other cutting of spending in other areas or an application for a rate cap exemption? Those are my three questions, thanks.
Thank you, Tash. I'll put that over to one of our officers. Jodie, thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Tash. We have received a number of public questions tonight regarding our enterprise agreement process and I just want to acknowledge that there are other questions that were very similar received from Emma Bagg of Carlton, Philippa Bulk of Reservoir, Ayananis Tsevasas of Preston and John Nugent of Epping. And so what I intend to do is to provide a holistic response to all of those questions to give you the full coverage, everybody. Enterprise bargaining negotiations are an operational matter managed under delegation by the CEO. We have been negotiating in good faith through the established mechanisms, including through the Fair Work Commission, and we don't intend to pursue negotiations either in the council chamber or through the media tonight. Councillors have been provided with high-level briefings regarding the status of the process. If we consider the quantum that is being posed, including the superannuation guarantee, our offer is actually a little bit different to that. So in terms of alignment to the rate cap, in year one, we're offering 2.5%. We're just 2% plus a 0.5% superannuation guarantee. That's against a rate cap of 1.75, so it's actually an offer exceeding the rate cap. In year two, it's an offer of 3.5%. That's 3% plus a 0.5% superannuation guarantee against a rate cap of 3%, so it actually exceeds the rate cap amount. In year three, it is set at 85% of the rate cap in its current offer. That rate cap is not yet known to us and we wouldn't know that until December this year. That is the best way for us to ensure we can protect our long-term financial sustainability. Alongside those offers, our lower-paid staff will get a bigger pay rise than this as we're offering them $30 in the year one, equivalent to an increase of 2.3% plus a 0.5% super. $45 in year two, equivalent to an increase of 3.5% plus a 0.5% super and a minimum $35 or 0.5% in year three, based on the 85%. Providing a pay increase that matches inflation and the rising cost of living will mean that we'll need to reduce services that our community needs and the jobs that go with those services in a rate-capped environment. When the CEO attended the Fair Work Commission to assist with negotiations, he took great care and time in explaining the constraints in a rate-capped environment. We value our staff deeply and understand the impact of the rising cost of living on them. We also value the services they provide to our community. Staff pay makes up more than 50% of our total expenses, approximately $100 million a year. The other 50% of our expenses, service contracts, grants, utilities, insurances, et cetera, total approximately $100 million. They're also rising well above inflation and so we need to consider the impact that that has on our community. Whilst our expenses are growing, the increase in our rates income, which is 74% of our total income, was capped last year at 1.75% and this year it's captured higher than that. We can't significantly increase the rest of our income well above 3.5% without making our services unaffordable to our community. This means that we do not have the increase in income we would need to pay our people at a level that matches inflation whilst also meeting our other expenses that are rising well above inflation. To afford the offer we've already made, we've built in $6 million of savings into our operating budget over the next two years. Agreeing to the union's demands or requests would add a further $4.7 million to the savings target, which is not sustainable. We value our staff and our services and our offer balances a fair pay rise with what we can afford whilst minimising the impact on our services and the jobs that go with those services. Other councils took the step during the pandemic to reduce their workforce and reduce services. At Darabben, we chose to maintain people's jobs and that has added to the financial challenges that we're facing now. We're bargaining in good faith and have made a fair offer that maintains many of the good conditions that our staff benefit from and we remain committed to working with unions to come to an agreement. Our staff at Darabben are already enjoying many conditions that are above those offered elsewhere in the local government sector. In this enterprise agreement, we already agreed to a number of extra conditions to support our staff. Those include the introduction of COVID or paid pandemic leave for up to five days if they're directed to isolate to work from home, a casual conversion clause that has been updated to reflect the national employment standards. Fixed term or temporary contracts where these contracts are to be extended, a review will occur no later than four weeks prior to expiring. We've included gender transition leave, changes to parental leave, replacement of absences to ensure that we're appropriately filling absences once people do depart, the right to disconnect to help with our post-COVID hybrid workforce and workplace, our family violence commitment and we also have new appendices for our Aboriginal and or Torres Strait Islander staff, as well as a new appendices for our Darabben Resource Recovery Centre staff. Thank you for your questions, Tash. I hope that that's answered all of them and others. If there's anything that we haven't, I'm happy to pick that up with you separately.
Thank you. I'll ask if Michael Ricardo is in the chamber now, in the gallery or in the other room? If not, then I'll ask one of our officers to read out the question, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr Ricardo has two questions. The first is, there are a number of stormwater pit lids across the council, particularly in Reservoir, which have been damaged, removed and not replaced, leaving meter-deep openings. One stormwater pit lid in the Beunac McMahon Reserve has had orange safety tape around it for so long that has faded white. There are risks to the public as they are placed near footpaths and in the nature strips. What needs to be done for council to keep its residents and ratepayers safe? And the second question is, why are council phone lines so restricted? Phone lines should be open later hours and weekends when there are dangers to the public caused by builders and their subcontractors. It is often too late by the time business hours come around for the council to act to protect residents and ratepayers.
Thank you. I'll get one of our officers, Vanessa? Is it? No, Rachel? Thank you, Rachel, to answer that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll respond to the first question. So firstly, I do want to say thank you to Michael for reporting the stormwater pit lid at Beunac McMahon Reserve that will be replaced this week. I have discussed this matter more broadly with the responsible manager and I do understand there's a backlog at the moment. We're going to meet further this week to look at the options to address it. Our aim is that this programme should fix pit lids promptly. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. And I have Jodie answering the second part of that question. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the question, Michael, and I'm sorry to hear you had an unsatisfactory service with our experience, rather, with our out-of-hour service. If you're concerned about unsafe work practices with relation to building sites, you can also contact WorkSafe. I'm happy to provide the number to you after this meeting. Also, if you'd like to provide details of your specific experience that would help us to review that case, to actually look at what our course of action taken was, to make sure we're dealing with those things appropriately. Our customer service phone line is open from 8.30am until 5pm daily and we do have out-of-hour service for those calls taken after hours that are either urgent matters or emergencies. Anything that is not an urgent matter is in fact delayed until the next day and so it is only emergencies like stormwater flooding or something of significant concern that would then be referred on overnight. But thank you very much for the feedback and happy to discuss offline.
Thank you. I have Michael Haralambos. Is he in the gallery this evening? No? Okay, I'll have one of our officers to ask that question. Thank you, Anna.
Thanks, Mayor. The questions are, what action is council taking and/or what advocacy has occurred with the Level Crossing Removal Authority 2? A, improve safety at the Gower Street bike and pedestrian crossing underneath the new Preston station? And B, improve the light cycle at the Murray Road pedestrian crossing, which has replaced the level crossing at Preston station? The cycle currently prioritises cars on Murray Road and wait times for pedestrians and cyclists are lengthy.
Thank you. And Vanessa will answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Michael. The ALXRP has installed additional signs in response to recent community feedback. However, council is asking for more to be done to ensure cyclist and pedestrian safety. Murray Road is managed by the Department of Transport and Planning and so council has limited influence over signalling decisions. Officers will raise this matter with the ALXRP and with the Department of Transport and Planning to request that signals are adjusted so that they better accommodate both pedestrians and cyclists.
Shall I have Anna Pricance in the gallery this evening? I believe is not in attendance, but I just thought I'd ask just in case. Over to you, Anna, to ask her questions on her behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three questions. The first is, how will council ensure that the proposed loft above the garage is not used as an illegal dwelling? Two, what ongoing checks exist to ensure this does not occur? The only way to exit the garages from 23 James Street will be to reverse out and then head out north along the rear right of way. And the third question is, what will be done to limit the continued damage to the laneway with the increased traffic?
Thank you, Anna. I have Vanessa to answer those questions.
Thank you for your question, Anna. This matter relates to a planning permit application that will be considered at the August Planning Committee and you are able to make a submission at that meeting. The application is for two dwellings only and the rear garage loft buildings do not meet the definition of a dwelling under the Darabben planning scheme because they do not contain a kitchen sink or food preparation areas. The loft space could not be used or converted into a separate dwelling without a further planning permit and doing so without planning approval would result in planning compliance action. A number of council departments have reviewed the proposed laneway and determined that it is appropriate use for vehicle access and should a planning permit be issued, a recommended condition would require that the southern portion of the laneway is constructed to council standards. So if this recommended condition is constructed, this would ensure that any potential impact on the condition of the laneway from additional traffic generated by the development would be mitigated.
Thank you. I have Calvin Granger and Dean Hurston. Are they in the gallery this evening? If not, I will over to you, Anna, to ask those questions. If not, I will over to you, Anna, to ask those questions.
Yes, thank you. There is one question. The question is, can council please advise the dollar amount of cost shifting from state government they estimate they incurred in twenty-two, twenty-three financial year?
Thanks, Anna. I have Jodie who will answer that question, or? Vanessa?
Apologies, Mayor. We just need one moment.
Thank you for the question. Council continues to be concerned about cost shifting from state and federal government, and whilst no specific figure is available, key areas of concern would be centred around waste-related reforms, early childhood, aged and home care, and building cladding.
Thank you. Hunter, is Hunter in the gallery this evening? If not, I will ask our officer to read out Hunter's questions.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three questions. The first is, what is your vision for youth services, activities and spaces in Darabin in terms of youth services' ultimate goals and what does that look like to you in a practical sense? Number two, are there aspects of your childhood missing today in Darabin? And number three, what is lacking in the area of youth services, activities and spaces in Darabin?
Thank you. Kylie will answer those questions.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for your questions, Hunter. Darabin's youth services strategy was endorsed by council in twenty nineteen, and a copy of this is available on council's website. Over one thousand young people's voices were heard in the development of the strategy with council's Young Citizens Jury co-leading its development, implementation and review. Council is currently in the process of developing an integrated families, youth and children's strategy that will again include co-design and extensive engagement with young people and involve council and other youth service providers and peak bodies.
Councilors, I need to ask for a procedural motion to extend question time for another thirty minutes. I had councillor McCarthy and councillor Rennie as a second. Are all those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. Apologies for that. We have our next person is Ruth Jolly. Is Ruth in the gallery? Thank you, Ruth.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm representing Streets Alive Darabin this evening. The Minister for Public Transport, Ben Carroll, has written to us recently to confirm that the state government consultation will commence consultation in September on accessible tram stops in Thornbury. I've got two questions in relation to this. Is Darabin council partnering with the department to engage the community about their vision for High Street Thornbury, which may include more pedestrian crossings and tram platforms that are easily accessible from the footpath? And my second question, what opportunities is Darabin exploring to advocate for safe, separated bike lanes on High Street in line with the council's transport strategy objectives to increase the role of sustainable transport modes, improve health and environmental outcomes, improve safety for the community and to integrate quality urban design, economic development and access? And I have an additional question unrelated to the tram stops, so I'll wait for this response first.
Okay, over to Vanessa. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, for your questions. We've met with the Department of Transport and Planning about this project, and we understand that the project team will be working to understand the issues and opportunities for the corridor over the coming months. So we're really looking forward to working with the department on this important project, and we'll also work to help ensure that our community knows about the department's consultation opportunity. We'll continue to work with the Department of Transport and Planning on their project to ensure that Darabin's strategic objectives are considered in their work.
Thank you. I have one question this evening regarding the successful Octopus Schools programme. Why did council scrap this programme when it's clear that the programme is popular with school communities across Darabin and that there is also an ongoing need for it?
Thank you. Vanessa, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Safety around schools continues to be a high priority for council, and this is why safety around schools is a key element in the Your Street, Your Save Programme, which is currently investigating Area B. And council also continues to deliver a range of programmes and road safety support programmes for schools in Darabin.
Thank you, but I would like to point out that doesn't answer my question about why the programme was cancelled. I'll ask a further question next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Velos, is Chris here? Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. I was here on the twenty-sixth of June wanting to know about overvaluing of property. And somebody was going to get back to me. No call as yet, absolutely nothing.
Over to Jodie who will answer that question. Chris?
Thank you for your question, Chris. I did have a moment to consider this earlier today, so apologies if I appeared a bit distracted when you were speaking just then. Just to confirm, council can only increase the total amount of rates and charges by the amount allowed under the state government's rate cap system? The total rates and charges are then distributed to all ratepayers according to one of seven rating types utilised for an individual property, which is then valued by the Valuer General of Victoria. Council does not increase its rates due to valuation increases, including on vacant or investor-based properties. And if you'd like some more information, I'm happy to take your details and call you tomorrow.
Well, I have a property that user valued with the Department of the State Revenue for one point two eight million. I can only get nine hundred and fifty-four it. So I'm paying taxes and rates on that much, which also increases my other properties. So what can be done about that?
Okay, Chris, we can take that on notice and I can get our officers to actually get in contact with you. I believe they have your details and they can take that on notice and contact you in reference to your answers to that.
Also, there was question number two. The city of Darabin aware of people who own multiple properties, how they've been fleeced with overcharging on state revenue, overvaluing property, being charged as an amount of where state revenue has an interest in that property, then paying the full value of the rates value on it? Say, for example, property's worth a million bucks, state revenue's got two hundred grand. Yeah, I get a state revenue bill and also a council rate for the full million dollars. That's not a fair way of sending any kind of accurate rates notice of state revenue. Now, that's borderlining on, I'd have to say, scam, Ponzi scheme.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I appreciate your time this evening. As I said, we'll take that on notice because your questions have not been submitted before twelve PM today. I'll have to get our officers to follow up your following questions that you've asked this evening.
Also, then I have question number three.
This would be your last question.
Australia currently has seven million seven hundred and seventy thousand square kilometres of land. We are the only country on planet Earth that charges vacant land tax. I don't believe I signed a contract with yous to pay that vacant land tax. I want to know why the van tax, and also it's reflected in the rates notice.
That question was submitted today, so I believe we possibly have an answer for that one. Is that correct? Thank you. Over to you.
Chris, I'll come back to you regarding the council rates that we charge for vacant land. However, I don't have a response for you regarding whether we need to know about the land shortage in Australia more. I've taken that more as a rhetorical question, but I'll come back to you specifically about what we do for vacant land.
Well, I hope so because I've been trying, I've been on this for years. Nobody brings me back. It's just a complete circle. I'll be back here next month. Nobody will call me.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate your time. I do have to, there's Laura, is Laura in the gallery this evening? Laura Fazio? If not, I'll over to our officers who can ask Laura. She is here? Okay, apologies. We'll just wait a moment. Welcome, Laura. Welcome, Con. Can you just kindly just state your name and your suburb? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name's Con Lambros.
And I'm Laura Fazio, three oh seven two for both of us.
Yes. Okay, we've got three questions. Laura and I are proud but humble members of an outstanding community in Darabin. We are also signatories to two petitions that have garnered over thirty thousand signatures with one central premise, and that is to protect and save the footprint of Preston Market. Our first question, will council commit to exploring with the state government compulsory acquisition in the event that the owners of the market, Preston Market Development, carries through with its threat as recent as last week to shut down the market in January? Question number two, last week representatives of the Save the Preston Market Action Group, which we're both members of, had a meeting with Planning Minister Sonia Kilkenny regarding her imminent decision on the future planning and heritage controls that will be applied to the Preston Market site. As we now have met with the minister, we are requesting a meeting with the council. The Save the Preston Market Group would like to meet with the mayor, CEO and interested councillors as soon as possible. The question number three, the Save the Preston Market Action Group is organising a community event called Hands Around the Market on August the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Will council, as they've done before, provide us support as they have done in the past?
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Con. I'll over to our officers who can answer those questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your questions, Laura and Con. So council has written to the Premier as per a twenty-sixth of June resolution of council requesting that the Premier establish a process and a mechanism for the state government and council to work together with traders and the market owners to consider and facilitate viable options for the market to continue operating in the short term beyond January twenty-four, and also the retention of the existing market in any future redevelopment of the site, consistent with the SUCS key findings. So thank you for seeking a meeting with us, and officer will reach out to you this week.
With respect to your third question, I will ask a council officer to reach out to you as soon as possible to seek more information about your event.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Con. I have Marion Atwater of Pasca Vale. Is she in the gallery this evening? Thank you. I'll go over to our officers to ask her questions on her behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms Atwater has three questions. The first is, what is the annual cost of the council's membership of the M9 and the Northern Council Alliance? Number two, was there an additional cost for the M9 Waste Services Shared Business Case, which is mentioned in a councillor briefing record on page two hundred and thirty-three of the agenda? And if so, what was the Darabin council's contribution? And the final question is, does the M9 group keep minutes of its meetings?
Thank you, Anna. Over to our officers to answer that question.
Thank you, Marion, for the question. Regarding question one, I can confirm that council's annual membership fee for the Northern Council Alliance is forty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars, which was agreed in March this year. And with the M9, since joining, there has been no membership fees due to the auspicing. Council, Melbourne City Council, however, at times member councils do contribute project funding. And regarding your question two, Darabin has contributed twenty thousand dollars to this project. And with your question three, I can confirm that minutes are circulated by the Lord Mayor of Melbourne's office to all member councils of M9.
Thank you. For those in the gallery who are talking, if you'd like to talk, can you kindly exit the gallery? Because it's quite difficult to hear echoes. Thank you to our officers. Wayne Moore, is Wayne Moore actually in the gallery? Thank you, Wayne.
Youngman Street, Preston. I was here last time regards the residential parking. As the Quest Hotel was charging for extra for a car park space, where in their permit, their council permit, they have to hand out a car park, free car park with every room. They'd been pushing cars down into our street. Now we've ended up with residential parking signs everywhere because of this. I was wondering what's been done about the Quest Hotel not giving out their free car park? That's my first question.
Over to you, Vanessa. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne, for your question. I will get an officer, the manager, to reach out to you tomorrow morning. I'm sorry, I think your question is slightly different to the ones you've submitted today, and I do want to be able to provide that information to you. So we understand that there has been some changes in the way that people are parking in the area following changes to parking controls. The permits on parking in each of the side roads near High Street will be adjusted to allow vehicles without permits to park near High Street for short periods during the day and without restrictions in the evening and overnight. Regarding your second question?
Can I just continue regards my first? Somebody did get back to me the next day saying he was going up there and going through their books and everything else, and he rang me up and he said, you know, it was all right, you know, he fixed it from the town planning, I gather. But I walked in there on the eleventh of July and asked him how much a room was, and they still gave me a separate price for the room and an extra fifteen dollars for car parking. So I think he'd better take an interpreter with him next time he goes up there.
Thank you, Wayne. We'll have the senior officer call you tomorrow morning to talk about that.
Yeah, it's also on that same question regards this. On Tuesday, the eleventh of July, we had, I just counted one side of the street, five cars on one side of the street over an amount of four hundred metres at least. Now, you can't say there's no room in the street. You know, people have been fined. As I said last time, a lady had a bar, a man had a barbecue.
And what, can I, can I, sorry, interject? Because we're going to run out of time. Is that a direct question or is this a statement?
Well, it's a statement that people can't have barbecues in our street anymore because we can't invite anybody because they can't park there.
I apologise, Wayne, but this is question time at the moment, and we do have a lot of questions to get through.
And the next thing I would like to know, your second question, is have they done an impact study regards dropping back the cars in the street because cars are now speeding? And there's a bottleneck there where schoolkids walk from blocks and blocks. And they all go through that street in Morgan Street, and you've got cars speeding down there now because there's less cars on the street. So that's my next thing.
Okay, officers, over to you on that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. So a follow-up study that will look at community feedback and safety will be completed in the new year. We'll use that study to evaluate the parking change, the trial parking changes that are in the area. And they'll also be used to decide whether parking changes will be changed or retained. But again, Wayne and officer will call you tomorrow to talk in detail with you.
My next question, my third question is, I didn't know there was any strike going on in the council at the moment, but I want to know, I can't park in my street because I can't get a permit, but I can't park in my backyard because I've been waiting three months for somebody to come and trim a tree so I can get a vehicle in the backyard because it's blocking my crossover.
Okay, so your question has not been submitted?
Oh, it's there, and it was submitted on the bottom of the form. And it's taken five trips for the council workers to come out and to try and cut this tree. Now, I don't know. I'd be going out and asking the union workers out there why they want a pay increase when it takes them five trips to cut a tree. why they want a pay increase when it takes them five trips to cut a tree. Maybe they should put that in their EBA.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. I'll get over to our officers to answer that question.
So I can firstly clarify that we, it's a contractor we work with on our tree pruning. And most of our tree pruning requests are subject to their availability. There was a backlog towards the end of last financial year, which is now being worked through. So in terms of some of the time you've experienced, that backlog is part of the reason for that. I do understand the team have been back several times. I think what happened the first time is they've gone out and pruned to what our normal standards would be for a pruning request, not fully understanding the need you're looking at to get access for the vehicle. So it has taken us some time to get back and make sure that we're meeting that need. It's not the standard we would normally prune to. And I am expecting that the crew will be back to make sure you do have that access. I do expect it to take six to eight weeks from here.
Thank you very much. I'll get our officers. If there's any further questions, that they can take it up with you when they speak to you tomorrow. I apologise, Wayne, but we are really running out of time. Jaclyn Sanders, are you in the gallery this evening? Thank you, Jaclyn.
Okay, good evening. My name's Jaclyn Saunders and I'm from Reservoir. I did, I just want to note that I did actually put three questions. One of them was decline because apparently it had been answered, but I will reword it and put it in another way so we get the correct answer. My third one apparently was one minute past 12, so I'll just have to be back next month to do that. But the question that I do have is: has Darabin Council advised residents within their area of the plan of the 20-minute or 15-minute cities? And if you have done that, have you sought feedback from the residents? If so, where can this information be found that residents were informed and able to speak about it? If you have not done this, I would like to know why, given that the council has a responsibility to be responsive to residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there is a person who's recorded in the gallery. Can I please ask you to exit and leave the chamber immediately? This is not the place to be recording.
I'm sorry. I'm only recording her. I haven't shown anyone else the space.
Apologies. I'm afraid that our governance rules don't permit any recording of any kind during the chamber.
No, not that. So I just said, I was only doing her as part of that group. And I really wanted an answer, and I was only showing her face.
So, it's over to the man.
I wanted to record your answer to her question.
All our, the council meetings are recorded and they are all live on YouTube. So if you can kindly delete it, but you also have your light on your phone. I'll go over to our officers to answer the question, but as I said, that all council meetings are live online and they stay there forever. So you can download it as many times and listen to it as many times as you like.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jaclyn, for your question this evening. The Darabin 2041 Community Vision was developed with a deliberative panel of community members that was established to undertake this work in 2021. This vision includes being a 20-minute city with access to amenities and services close to our homes under the theme of prosperous, livable and flourishing. Council is required to implement the community vision through its efforts, including strategic planning. When we do undertake strategic planning and also transport projects, we do consult with our community.
Thank you. Who we got next? Annette, if you can kindly come to the lectern, state your name and your suburb, be great. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Annette Culbrenner. Thank you very much for, sorry, I'm terrible at public speaking. So question one is: why are developers being allowed to not adhere to planning an environmental act in not correctly advertising a development?
Thank you. Over to our officers.
Thank you, Inet, for your question. Planning permit applications, including includes public notice requirements, and they're processed in accordance with the Planning and Environment Act 1987. I'm aware that you have a concern with the way that one particular planning permit application was notified. I'm finalising my investigation into this matter, and I'll contact you this week to discuss it.
It's not just me, it's happening to other people. And I've also notified you of that. Okay?
Thank you. I'll contact you later in the week.
Okay. Why are Darabin councillors arborists not following Australian standards in tree protection zones and structural root zones, and deferring to what developers agree to in considering planning permits?
Thank you. Over to our officers.
Thank you, Annette. It's a slightly different question I've got in front of me. So if there is something further we need to cover afterwards...
Sorry about that. I was in an appeal this morning and trying to submit the questions on time and also do my planning appeal.
No, no, no problem. I just want to make sure we answer what you're after. Certainly, our approach is that our arborists do enforce Australian standards when it comes to tree protection. I'm not aware of a systemic issue where that's not happening. I know that our parks managers reached out to you about a particular matter recently, but if you're worried about something broader than that, then I think that would be something that I'd like some further information about.
I can provide that. Question number three: how many years since the last flood map was updated prior to the May 2023 update?
Thank you to our officers.
Thank you, Annette. So council's planning scheme formally incorporates 1998 data. We're working towards updating the planning scheme, and we're currently advising people with current building or planning permit applications about a new flood map on a case-by-case basis. Anyone seeking information about how this applies to a particular property can contact our planning or building teams.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Annette, for attending and asking your questions. Do I have Dylan in the gallery this evening? Is Dylan in the gallery? Dylan's coming. Thank you. Just step up to the lectern, just state your name and your suburb.
My name's Dylan. I'm from Preston, local resident. So my first question is...
Dylan, just stand up. You don't need to speak straight into the microphone because it's causing a bit of feedback.
As a local young resident, the upcoming Voice to Parliament will be the first referendum that I vote in. But I've seen no action at all from my local council, so can the mayor please outline what action the council will be doing to educate and resource any campaigns within the council area? And can you please also explain the lack of any kind of campaign as of up to now?
Thank you, Dylan. I'll over to Kylie.
It's through you, Mayor. Thank you, Dylan, for the question. Council is considering this item at its meeting later tonight.
Okay, cool. Second kind of point of order that I would actually just like to mention, I'm not sure why no one's allowed to come into these meetings and why there's a person kept, but there's more than enough room in here for residents to come and voice their opinions. And frankly, it's kind of disgusting that the council will not let their own community come in here and voice their own opinions. You can hear all of the workers outside screaming that they want a pay rise, which none of you will give them, right? It's completely embarrassing.
Dylan, what's your question?
Oh, I'd just like to say that, that it is embarrassing on your behalf of the union.
Dylan, if I knew there were, if I knew that there was this amount of people that was going to attend tonight's meeting, and I'm talking, there's at least over 100 people downstairs, I would have postponed from being in the chamber this evening here, and I would have actually had it down in the main town hall to allow everybody to be there. So apologies.
There's room outside, there's room in the room next...
To see it online or what's going on?
Yes, but there is room right outside. There's room next door, and the fact that you're going to actively cut down everyone's voices...
Dylan, I'm not here to have a dispute with you.
What is the issue with having that?
O H and S safety issue. We can only have 20 people in this room from the gallery and 20 people in the other room. Where the actual town hall can, no, due to O H and S, if there was an emergency evacuation, we need to have those areas cleared. So thank you very much for attending this evening and appreciate your time. Sorry, Mayor, there's actually seven, like 10 chairs are all empty here and I believe in the other room. People have asked their question and they've left. So thank you very much to Mitriadas.
If you're outside, you can come in, there's spare seats.
Dylan, thank you. We appreciate your time this evening. We are running out of time for question time. We have other people who are waiting in the gallery here who would like to ask their questions. So thank you. John Eugent?
Hello, you are? Has one of my questions already been answered? Sorry, as I said, one of my questions has already been answered. I just got two questions. And Mayor Williams, could you please advise why junior clubs and senior clubs both pay the same on pavilions? Doesn't this council give any incentive to support for junior people to play sport? Question one. Question two: could you please advise if the Billory has been hired out from mid-August to the end of August, or has the city oval been hired out from mid-August to the end of September?
I need a procedural motion to extend, I have councillor Messina to extend time, I have councillor Lawrence. I'll put that to vote to extend another 30 minutes for question time. All those in favour? Thank you.
Are we able to do that? I thought the governance rule included it.
We have moved it twice, but we do only have one other question, and I'm just allowing it for now because we only have one other question, if that's okay? Over to our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions, John. So in relation to the junior clubs and senior clubs paying for the same for pavilions, so our fees and charges are based on the insurable value of the pavilion, not which club is using the facility. However, council's performance subsidies programme includes an allocation for the number of registered junior teams, or where they've got 20 or more junior players. And meeting that performance subsidy criteria results in discounted fees for sports clubs, which acts as an incentive and a reward for tenant clubs when they're meeting our various inclusion targets in that space. And we will further consider your feedback on incentivising young people to participate in sport in our upcoming review of our sporting fees, charges and occupancy agreement policy. In relation to Billory Oval and Preston City Oval, so we obviously have tenanted sports clubs that are there in those timeframes, but officers are also currently in the final stages of negotiations with relevant clubs and football leagues for a range of bookings in those timeframes. That's an operational matter, and I'm happy to discuss that with you when we meet.
I've been trying to get a meeting with you and Carly since 28th of February, 27th of February. How about I'll be down here tomorrow? How about we all sit down and have a bit of a chat?
Thank you very much, John. I appreciate your time. I do have a meeting with you tomorrow, and I will ask Melanie, if it's possible, one of our other officers, to join that meeting, if that's okay, by you. Thank you. That is all for question time this evening. So thank you for those who have come this evening to listen and to ask questions. Submissions: under the council's governance rules, we permit members of the public to register to address at an ordinary council meeting in relation to matters listed on the agenda. And we'd like to say thank you to those who have registered their intentions to do so. Prior to the relevant agenda item, those people who have registered to make a submission will be invited to come forward, one by one, to address council. For those who are attending virtually, when I call your name, please turn your camera on and unmute your microphone to speak. In accordance with our governance rules, submissions can be made in relation to notice of motions and urgent business items. So I believe... Are we going to go straight to submissions?
Oh, you've got petitions.
Oh, we'll go to petitions. Okay, we have another petition that's just come through. Councillors, we have two petitions to table this evening. I believe petition one through councillor Newton. Thank you, councillor Newton.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I move a motion to table a petition for referral to the CEO for consideration and response concerning the four dead black swans, 5,000 signatures collected, no fines issued by Darabin City Council. I move the petition signed by approximately 1,333 people, and I note that that is only local signatories, and that complies with council's governance rules. So I will read out the petition. It's a bit long, but I think it's worth it. Help Friends of Edward's Lake protect and support Darabin's wildlife, pets and humans by ensuring the off-leash rules are clear at Edward's Lake Park. Edward's Lake supports a rich biodiversity of wildlife, including waterbirds, amphibians, reptiles and marsupials. These animals are vulnerable to attack from off-leash dogs and dog owners who do not adequately know how to keep their pets at a safe distance from the local wildlife. We need your support to ensure stronger protections for our local wildlife. We need your support for protecting the biodiversity of this area. We need your help to ensure that pet owners get the support and education they need to help protect wildlife. We need to help to ensure the harmonious interactions between Darabin's wildlife, pets and humans. On Tuesday 25th of October 2022, a dog attacked the resident black swan, Kevin Mabel, and the clutch of five signets, resulting in two signets dying of their injuries. Despite reporting the owner's identity to Darabin City Council, enforcement actions have not been taken. The owner and their dog continues to walk around the lake as it lunges at waterbirds to this date. On Friday 14th of July 2023, at approximately 12:30, a number of witnesses saw a black, small to medium stocky, off-leash dog rush at the swan couple Kevin and Mabel near the yellow toilet block next to the playground. The dog managed to get hold of Mabel, the female black swan, with its teeth and continued to bite her until the owner pulled the dog away from her, but the owner again lost control of the dog and it attacked Mabel a second time. The owner managed to gain control of the dog after a period of time. Mabel was then finally able to get away from the dog, but she only managed to move metres before she fell down on the grass and died shortly after. The dog owner looks nervously around for anyone who'd witnessed the incident and left the park heading towards the corner of Edwards and Griffith Street. Mabel had been part of the Friends of Edward's Lake community since November 2020. She was named by the community, was an excellent mum to all her signets, and always made Kevin eat his greens and was loved. Her death is tragic, and we must now give her a voice and fight for change. She was buried at Edward's Lake, and the Friends of Edward's Lake volunteers will plant around her burial site to remember the joy she brought to us all. We're again petitioning the city of the Darabin to take the following action to prevent the above incident happening in the future. Install signage on the footpath and on signposts that clearly state dogs must be on lead and under control to protect wildlife. Signs should advise of possible fines if laws are not followed. Install clear signage at the exit of the dog park that is separate to the dog park rules, clearly stating dogs must be on lead and under control to protect wildlife. Signs should advise of possible fines if laws are not followed. Local laws officers to provide educational workshops about responsible pet ownership and provide dog training opportunities at Edward's Lake Off-leash Dog Park, first workshop to be held before 31st of December, as promised in Darabin's 2022 to 2025 Domestic Animal Management Plan. Local laws officers to receive briefing from Parks and Open Space Team about damage off-leash and uncontrolled dogs can have on biodiversity and ecosystems. Local laws officers start patrolling Edward's Lake and Edward's Creek wetlands at peak dog exercising times to provide education about responsible pet ownership and issue fines if necessary. If current local laws officers do not have capacity, another local laws officer position should be created to patrol all waterways and conservation areas in Darabin. It's the hours. Local laws officers to meet with Friends of Edward's Lake Committee to build a partnership to ensure biodiversity and ecosystems are being cared for. Thank you.
Thank you for that long petition. And yes, that was very devastating for all involved, including... including, um, Mabel's partner. As you know, these swans usually, um, mate once in their life and, um, yeah, quite devastating and particularly for those who witnessed it. I do have a submission in reference to this particular petition, uh, is Kate Joss available? Thank you, Kate, you have two minutes.
Evening mayor, councillors and employees, tonight we present you with a petition to move towards a culture of responsible pet ownership. It is clear from the events of Friday the 14th of July, when Mabel, the resident black swan from Edward's Lake, was killed by an off-leash dog, that we do not have a culture of responsible pet ownership. This is all that remains of her, a research collar from a project that she can no longer participate in because her life was taken in a brutal attack. I was called to rescue Mabel as the only wildlife Victoria rescuer in reservoir. I arrived at the park to find her almost gone, alone on the grass. I stayed with her until she was ready to go, all while I could hear her mate Kevin desperately calling for her. We petitioned Darabben in October 2022 to move towards a culture of responsible pet ownership via education and enforcement. This was after I witnessed two of Kevin and Mabel's signets being mauled to death by a waterfowl hunting dog, in what has been discovered as an intentional attack. The identity of the dog owner is known to Darabben local laws team, yet they have failed to take action, including interviewing me. 5,000 local residents signed that petition in October 2022, stating that they wanted education and enforcement to help create a respectful relationship between humans, pets and wildlife. I can't help but wonder that if those 5,000 people, 5,000 people, were heard, if Mabel would be alive today. Tonight we bring you the same petition with 1,400 signatures in less than a week. During the last week, we have heard hundreds of incidents across Darabben of irresponsible pet ownership. Darabben does not have a current culture of responsible pet ownership, but a culture of dogs will be dogs, little boys will be boys. We ask you not to look at other councils that are doing worse than what Darabben is, but we ask you to look towards councils that have the best strategy towards pet ownership and strive to do better than that. We ask you to step up and not let Mabel die in vain. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate, um, yeah. We have another petition from councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I move a motion to table a petition for referral to the CEO for consideration and response concerning the protection of our old growth trees at La Trobe University. I move that the petition, which has been signed by 10 people in hard copy and 855 electronic signatures and that complies with council's governance rules, requesting that the city of Darabben take action to protect these trees. I note more specifically that the petition urges Darabben council to reject a planning permit application and, um, asks La Trobe and Honeywell to seek alternative options to removal, uh, so that we can protect this old growth tree, which is thought to be 400 years old, uh, predating European settlement or invasion, I should say. Um, and there is a speaker who's here to speak, uh, to this petition, um, Jim Shug.
Before Jim comes up, I just want to ask through our governance that, because this petition was not, um, in our agenda item this evening, so I'm just going to ask our governance to explain for those who are online to, um, explain why it has been added to our agenda.
Thank you, and just also for council confirmation, we did receive the submission of the petition today in accordance with our governance rules. Um, however, unfortunately, we didn't have the full requirements met to enable us to circulate it to all councils by four o'clock, which is our requirement. Um, we've had difficulty connecting with each other over phone today, but, um, Jim and his, um, partner Susan, I think, apologies, um, have kindly provided us with the rest of that information this evening to enable us to proceed with the petition, so thank you councillors for your indulgence and apologies for the late circulation.
Thank you, we also have a submission for this, this evening, for this particular item.
Excuse me, ma'am, can I just, um, ask governance?
In reference to voting for the item?
Yeah, we haven't voted for the two petitions.
I'll do this one and then I will vote on it, if that's okay, because I'm doing it together. Um, I'll... I'm going to go to Jim to do his submissions and then I'll go back to voting on the first petition and then we can go and vote on the second petition. Uh, Jim, I will ask you, you can now step up and you can speak on this item as part of your submission.
Good evening, mayor, good evening councillors and employees. I've been caring for the state's most significant heritage tree population in a botanic garden setting for 20 years. I've viewed the tree and the site, the river red gum. I find it difficult to imagine how its removal could be justified on aboricultural grounds. I have viewed a report, uh, submitted by the university, La Trobe University, and I find that some of the recommendations, the recommendation to intervene with chainsaws is also poorly justified in that report and I don't think that option should go ahead at this stage either. So the report supporting the removal case is not being made available by the applicant and so I'm unable to comment on the justification provided. In terms of its heritage significance, the river red gum that the applicant Honeywell is proposing to remove ranks in the very highest echelon. The tree belongs to an old growth cohort that has become rare and is projected to vanish from urban areas of South Eastern Australia in the relatively near future. A worst-case scenario suggests within about 100 years. This is critical because old growth trees have characteristics unique to their age class. Countless species depend on these characteristics for their continued existence. The most important of these characteristics is the presence of hollows and this tree has 26 occupied hollows. This river red gum predates settlement. Such trees are bridges that span the divide of colonisation.
You have 15 seconds left.
Let's not blow up this bridge. By rejecting the planning application, council can take a positive step and set an example demonstrating that we can coexist with these amazing trees that so enrich our lives whilst supporting the existence of so many of the creatures with which we share this earth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate your time coming this evening and for submitters. Um, I will ask for a mover for the first petition item from councillor Newton, do I have a mover? Councillor Newton, I believe you're the...
Do I need... Do I need to move the petition?
We need to move the petition.
Happy to move, yeah.
And so we can give it to our officers, so...
Sorry, yeah, I was confused because we'd moved on to petition two.
So you're the mover and councillor Messina is the seconder, we'll put that item to vote, this is for the petition number one, all those in favour, that's been carried unanimously. We'll go to petition number two, which was councillor Rennie, councillor Rennie's the mover, do I have a seconder in reference to that? I had councillor Newton put up a hand first, I have councillor Newton as the seconder, I'll put that to vote, all those in favour, that has been carried unanimously. Thank you to our officers and councillors. Um, we'll move on to the next item, which is, uh, consideration of reports this evening, so councillors, we do have a really large agenda, as you know, and we do, uh, on time limits, so I will ask, um, for our, if you need to ask questions to our officers, that we can commence and if I feel that we've asked enough questions, I believe that, um, I can ask for the debate to continue and cease question time. Um, we'll move over to the first item on this evening's agenda, which is the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee advised to cancel on the Voice to Parliament referendum. I have, uh, submitters this evening, I have eight submitters in reference to this item, so I will do the submitters first. We have, um... No, we don't, we have... Um, there's been, I'm really disappointed to hear this, that there's been, um, I guess people feeling a bit, um, uncomfortable, so I think I'm going to go with a couple of minutes break, um, for those who need to take a toilet break, if that's okay, for a moment, so let's adjourn for five minutes and we'll come back at, um, let's say 25 minutes past, that gives us four minutes. let's say, 25 minutes past, so it gives us four minutes. Ken, is my, now it's working, thank you. I believe we have a number of submitters this evening. I first have Phil Cooper, is Phil available? Oh, okay.
Right, now councillor Greco is still waiting outside if he can be told to come back in.
I'm sure he'll come, there might make a difference whether he's in the room or not. He might have gone to the toilet. Well, maybe one of our officers can ask councillor Greco to come in, thank you. Was there anybody in particular who was a submitter this evening who needs to leave? Come up then, I'll ask you to speak first and then we'll go to... Back to Phil. That's all right, you've missed your spot now. Thank you, just state your name and your suburb.
Oh, that'd be better, wouldn't it? Thank you.
Jill, just to let those and other submitters, you have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Okay, I'm an Aboriginal woman who 100% supports a voice to Parliament, enshrined in Australia's constitution. We are not recognised in Australia's constitution. We didn't get voting rights until 1967 as Aboriginal people. Can you imagine if, so I'm making a small statement and then I'll ask a question, if that's okay. Can you imagine in 1967, if we had, did we have local government in 1967? Okay, thank you. If we had local government that weren't brave enough to come out and support a yes vote? Where would Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people be today? We wouldn't even be seen as citizens in our own country. We had crimes against humanity that were committed on our people in this country in the name of colonisation. Now you and you and everyone in this room is not responsible for that. Because you do not carry the sins of your ancestors. But you're responsible if you continue to be bystanders and not help us get change. And that change is empowerment and that change is hope for us as Aboriginal people. My mother is a Gundig Mara elder, 97 years old, and she still remembers the trauma and the hate that she felt growing up as an Aboriginal woman. She is still alive, she lives in Brunswick, and she said it's about bip, bip, bip time that we got some standing in our own country. So I asked Darabben Council, would you come out publicly and support a yes vote for the upcoming referendum? We have our elected voice, which is the First People's Assembly of Victoria, who have come out. They're our elected, they're our democratic elected voice. They've come out and supported it 100%. Most Aboriginal organisations have come out and supported 100%. I am now asking the Darabben Council to do the right thing and help us make that change, thank you.
Thank you, Jill, I think you actually asked about four questions there. No, no, thank you, that was great. Phil, would you like to speak now? Thank you. Nah, it's all good.
Act of Five. And it's going to be hard to put 65,000 years in for two minutes. But, and it's also all right to hear that you follow our problems too. We're not the only ones. And, but, thank me, councillors and that, for inviting me and that. And I pay my respects to the custodians of the land, the colonial nation, the ranchery. And I've lived in, on and off in Darabben for over 50-odd years. And to me, that Darabben was the one that sort of was more friendly than any other racist country towns and the rest of it and so on. And I'm hoping that you have also the empathy with Aboriginal people for the voice. But getting back to the voice, where my technology, IT is no good, so I'll go back to the old hard copy. Yeah, now let's get back to the voice. Most of us are law-abiding citizens, yes? Respectful citizens, and we live in a democratic society. You even live with the good and the bad and the ugly decisions that are made. Because of all of us, by law, that are set down by the powers-to-be within the democratic way of life, that we do by the policies, practice, procedures, rules, regulations, legislation through that we have given to us, we abide by it as an example. You know, we have licence to drive a car. We've got to wear clothes, we stop at red lights and the rest of it, so we are programmed. And that, so when a democratic society, a way of life, we are supposed to, all have a voice. Each and every one of us should have a voice. And we should add that voice to being a democratic society. And we should be allowed to voice our opinions and the rest of it. We should know the pros and cons of a decision, a balanced decision, that you're going to make, each and every one of you is going to make, on a day-to-day basis anyways, of your own good and what you do, and that for your families and so on. Now, to me, when you think about making a decision, I try and follow the legacies of my elders, pioneers, warriors, and our way of...
I'll give you another 10 seconds, I apologise, but I've allowed you to go.
All right, it won't be very long now.
I can hear the emotion.
And because Uncle, yeah, was, as you may or not know, the seat of Cooper was named after William Cooper, who fought human rights and justice against other issues concerned, not only for Aboriginal people, for everyone. And William Cooper wasn't the only one who protested, campaigned, wrote letters and petitions and needed a voice. Me, they were saying that the voice is, the voice is to be within, not without. If you are within, you are not without. As you may or may not know, they have billions of dollars tagged as black money and saving and so on. But that money has gone somewhere else, it's not made by Aboriginal people. And so that money, it should be, for saving lives, programme dollars should be going to saving lives, strengthening families, childcare through education, health, paying employment, et cetera. Not being spent on administration and the rest of it. And last but not least, and we are not, if we are not within, then we can't make changes. And we will be left without, we will be further down the food chain, more so than ever before. We will have people in dire straits, struggle street, destitute, family violence, deaths, death in custody, suicides, and go on and go on and go on and go on. And we will still be fringe dwellers in our own country. But so, if you just can make a decision, have a bit of a recall with Aboriginal people, all good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Muriel in? Muriel?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi everybody, my name's Muriel Bamblett and I'm a Yorta Yorta Jata Rang Tangerong Bunnarong woman. Really pleased to be here. I really am begging you to really reconsider and consider the yes vote, I think it's critical. This, Victoria has led, it was the highest rate voting for the yes vote in 67. We are leaders, you need to lead now. Our people need you, we need voice. I work at the Victorian Aboriginal Childcare Agency, I'm the CEO there. We've got about 300 people that service and live and work in Darabben here. They would be so disappointed to know that this council did not vote yes or did not consider that it had a role to that young fellow that got up. Thank you very much for the yes t-shirt, thank you. You know, like we, you have led for so long, do not stand. Councillor Greco, remember when you spoke to me about a treaty? You wanted to be the first council to actually start to begin the treaty process. That's how ambitious, that's how great this council has been. And I think now, no disrespect to all the Aboriginal people that inform you, but we have got, we know now the information. When it first came out, the yes vote, we didn't have a lot of good information. But what we need to do is not focus on the voice in Canberra. This is a voice for Victoria, it's a voice for Aboriginal people. Often it's a voice for the voiceless. Uncle Phil talked about the fact that it's going to improve health outcomes, it's going to improve family violence, justice. It's Aboriginal people informing and having a voice at the table. For too long, our people haven't had a voice. So it's critical when we think about this, what that voice will mean. I sit at many tables now, I'm on so many forums, and it's amazing, when I'm not in the room, guess what? Not Aboriginal, Aboriginal issues don't get raised. And look at us now, we have Aboriginal lawyers. If we took all those Aboriginal politicians, look at Linda Burney, look at all of Pat Dodson, and look at the Voice, and look at the prestige they give. And even when Pat Dodson walks in with his colours, everybody knows he's a strong Aboriginal man. But we need those people and we need more of them, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know what we do need, we need more Aboriginal people and Torres Strait Islanders to come and join the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. So feel free to please come and join that, because it would be great to have more voices on that. We can get our officers to reach out to you. Kylie's not in her head, I see, so that would be fantastic. Esma, Auntie Esma, are you available? Yes, thank you.
Thankfully, I'll be short, sharp and sweet. I am a Bangarrang Tunnarong and Muradri woman. And I've been in Melbourne now for 23 years, but on and off I've been here quite through all my life. I, this council, I remember when we used to drive into Northgood, it said, "Northgood supports Aboriginal land rights." And it was the best feeling in the world to know that we were supported by the local council. And you guys have always supported Aboriginal issues. And this is really important, it's important for self-determination. Right now, the policies and programmes impacting on our people are not what we've come up with. We fit into them, yes, because we have to, but we don't have the voice to fit into those. We depend on the government in power for voice. Now, if the government in power like us, we do good. If they don't like us, we don't. But with this enshrined in the constitution, we will have right to advise anybody. And if that doesn't work, we can go to the parliament and ask the parliament to look at what we think, our opinion of what should happen for our people. That is the change that is being asked. It's a simple question, it's not difficult, you'll hear no everywhere. If you look at every newspaper since it started, it's been no, no, no. You've got all the no's. I don't hear the voices that are saying yes. I don't hear the voices saying support Aboriginal people. Make it possible for us to have a say in the future of ourselves and our children and our children's children for generations. That's why we need it enshrined in the constitution. It will ensure that we have a say, and that's what we need, thank you.
Thank you, Esma.
83% of our mobs support yes.
Linda, is Linda available? Linda, are you available? Linda Bamblett? No, okay, Dylan?
Hello. As we've just seen, we've probably just had some of the most powerful speakers that we could possibly get in this room. And I thank all of you for coming tonight and showing your support for this. And that's kind of just why I also came here, just to show support really and backing in. Because as we've seen, 83% of First Nations community, they want this. And when the Ullaris Statement from the Heart was signed, when First Nations leaders from all around the country got together and said, "We want to do this", that's what we need, that's what we need to back them in. They've told us that this is a path forward, that this is a step forward. And sitting here, idly by, just frankly, isn't good enough on your part. And just sitting here with nothing to do, twiddling your thumbs is personally just a bit of a cop-out. And we just need to do the right thing. And I hope to you, councillors, council workers, everyone here, that we can all unite together and do things as an Australia to make this country a better place. So I hope that can be considered, thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Is it Lananos? Yani, I apologise.
I'd like to pay my respect to the traditional owners of the land on which we stand. First of all, I want to congratulate everyone who's already speaking before me. It's been absolutely amazing to see the support. I understand that the council wants to focus on education around the voice to Parliament. But what has the council actually done so far to show they actually cares about helping educate the community about the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander voice to Parliament? Particularly when they refuse to take a stance, does that mean that you will be equally advocating on both sides of the argument? It would be really good to see some real action that supports Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. After all, when you stay neutral, you're basically on the side of the oppressor. It seems like the council is ignoring much of the grassroots support in the community that the community is displaying. Very similar how the council is also ignoring the community's support for the Darabben City Council workers, who have been offered a severely subpar offer in their new EBA. The trade union, the trade union movement has had a long history of supporting First Australians in struggle. As a number of councillors and members of political parties that support workers organising in trade unions or directly affiliated with trade unions, it is quite odd that the council was so shockingly complacent with the offer, starting at only a 2% increase in the first year.
I thought your submission was about the voice.
It all links all together, it all links all together, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And not to mention also using contract labour, known as scab labour, to undercut workers pushing for a fair deal. Absolutely shameful.
I think you're mixing things up here a bit, which is really inappropriate, from my perspective.
I'm just going to tie it up altogether at the last second.
You're confusing the issue from the voice to...
I think, I think overall, there's community support for both issues and the union movement has had a long history of supporting First Nations in struggle.
I'm now going to have to cease and ask you to finish, thank you.
Better on both issues.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you, and I really appreciate all those submitters who have spoken this evening and coming out on a cold winter night. Councillors, we'll move over. If councillors have any questions in reference to the next agenda item that we have on this evening. Do we have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Councillor Dimitriades?
Who am I addressing? Which staff are responsible, will be answering the questions?
You ask all questions through me.
Sure.
Councillor Dimitriades, thank you.
So if council passes this recommendation tonight, which is from the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee and from council officers, what will council's position actually be on the voice to Parliament?
Kylie?
Thank you. Through you, mayor. So the council's position would include helping the community understand the referendum and the questions before it. That would include providing accurate information and facilitating processes. For instance, encouraging people to register on the electoral roll and disseminating and promoting relevant and accurate information to help members of our community understand the impending referendum.
You have a supplementary question?
That's correct. So I note that the recommendation here before council, and thank you for explaining that, is that council do not make a stance on the voice to Parliament referendum. So in establishing this position, did the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee or Darabben Council consult the Indigenous members of the community who live, work and study in Darabben?
Thank you for your question, over to Kylie.
Through you, mayor. Standard process on engaging on matters related to Aboriginal affairs is to seek advice from the Dac and the traditional owners of Darabben. Within the report, the Dac have indicated that they have consulted within their community. It was a Dac-led process, not an officer-led process, but a Dac-led process. And they spent considerable time considering the matter and engaging in a way that they felt was appropriate.
Councillor Dimitriades, yes?
Thank you, mayor. I notice that our highly respected elders in the room are shaking their heads to that response. But I do have another question. Did the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee or Darabben Council consult the Wurundjeri Wurung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation, who are the traditional owners of the land on which we stand here today? And who, according to the response we've received from officers, were supposed to be consulted? So were they consulted and was the First People's Assembly consulted, who is a democratically elected voice for First Peoples in Australia? So were either of these organisations consulted about this matter?
Through you, mayor. I can advise that officers did reach out to the Wurundjeri Wurung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation as the traditional owners and custodians, that's outlined in the council report. Officers understand at this point, the Wurundjeri Wurung Cultural Heritage Corporation have not confirmed a position regarding the voice to Parliament referendum. In terms of the engagement approach undertaken at this point, the standard processes were followed, which was engagement and advice through the Dac as well as the traditional owners.
Thank you, Mick. Can I just clarify, the First People's Assembly haven't been consulted on this matter? I don't, I didn't see that in the report. I don't, I didn't see that in the report, and that wasn't specifically answered.
Through you, mayor, that's correct.
Um, and just finally, um, the, were Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander organisations that are based in Darabben consulted? And if so, which ones were consulted? Because I noticed that a lot of our, um, the elders that spoke tonight didn't actually...
Thank you, you've asked a question.
They're shaking their heads.
Through you, mayor. Uh, it was a process, an engagement process that was led by the DAC. I'd need to engage with them and ask them that question.
Sorry, mayor, just one final question. Is there a member from DAC here that may be able to respond to that, um, that question? Because I think it's a question that needs, um, important answering, particularly when we're making a big decision on this matter.
I don't think that is an appropriate question at this point in time, so I, I don't believe our officers need to answer that. So thank you very much. Uh, councillors, are there any further questions? If not, do I have a mover on the item? Councillor Rennie, the mover? Do I have a secondor? Councillor Hannan? Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Councillor Rennie, as you are the mover, you can speak on the item.
Um, thank you. I think it's a great shame that the debate tonight has been politicised when I felt as though we'd been on a journey to try and bring people with us and get to a point which everybody, um, was on board with. We're now in a situation where we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. But I'm going to support the officer recommendation at this point in time. And that's because I don't believe anything good will come from ignoring the advice of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee and getting to work tomorrow and finding that half of that committee resigns, which I think is probably what will happen if we ignore their heartfelt advice today. And ultimately, I think that is more damaging to the voice campaign than if we do what we've been asked tonight by the advisory committee that we have said we will listen to for years. Imagine the headlines if we get in tomorrow ignoring their advice, and the media gets hold of the fact that whilst saying yes, Darabben council has alienated the Aboriginal Advisory Committee. That will not go down well for the yes campaign. I proudly have a yes poster on my front fence. I go to work in a neighbourhood house every day where our sewing group is sewing yes bags, where we are putting in submissions to get funding for the yes campaign. In this case, I'm separating my personal, personally-held support for yes from what I think is the right thing to do for this council at this point in time. And that is, we tasked, we asked the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee to go away and arrive at a considered position around the referendum at this point in time. And they have come back with a considered position. And we have thanked them for that considered position, which we have listened to both in the context of a meeting and which we have listened to further in a council briefing. We cannot, on the one hand, thank them for their advice and tell them that we respect the work they have undertaken whilst simultaneously ignoring it. I don't believe there is a councillor here who does not, in their personal capacity, support yes. But ultimately, the yes campaign will be won, not because Darabben council, which is widely known for left-wing virtue signalling, says, "Vote yes", that actually serves to alienate some people in the Australian community, unfortunately. The yes campaign will be won because of the quality of conversations that we take out into the community, and that is what the motion here tonight is going to set in train. An ability for council to go into our community, to have conversations, to inform people. And there is no doubt in my mind that when people engage in those conversations, when they engage in those kitchen table conversations, when they are provided with quality information, they will come to a point of understanding that recognition of First Nations people in the constitution is fundamentally important, and that further to that, we can achieve that through a voice to parliament.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hannan, as a secondor, would you like to speak on this item?
I'll reserve my right, thank you, mayor.
No problem. Any other councillors? Councillor Dimitriatus?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I have an amendment that I just circulated.
Okay, I don't have a laptop in front of me. Um. Thank you. Uh, do our officers have that? And is it possible if I can go on the screen? Oh, great, thank you. I'll give, uh, officers a moment and councillors and those who are watching. Do we have a secondor for that item, for your amendment? Councillor Lawrence? Councillor Dimitriatus, would you like to speak on the item?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. Firstly, I would like to thank the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee for their recommendation to council about what stance Darabben should take on the voice to parliament referendum. DAC has recommended that council's formal position be that council inform and educate the community without actually stating whether Darabben supports the voice or not. However, it is clear from the submissions we've heard tonight that there are many people in our community who believe that council should not be silent on this matter, but instead make a bold and brave stance on the voice referendum, particularly since community members will be looking to council for advice, and remaining silent is effectively a no vote, in my opinion. Tonight, we heard from highly respected elders, from members of the First Peoples Assembly, who were, who apparently were not consulted on this matter, as we've heard from officers, from the Indigenous organisations that operate in Darabben, and from members of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community, about the importance of council not sitting on the fence, but coming out in support of the voice, um, the voice referendum. Auntie Mural Bamblett spoke passionately that council needs to lead now. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people need council now to support the voice to parliament. Auntie Jill Gallagher, she spoke about the responsibility if we don't, um, if we become bystanders and we don't actually, um, become a yes council. Uncle Phil, he's made it clear Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people need a voice to parliament to be within the system where decisions are made about them. He stated that if we are not within, we will be left out and we will be further down the food chain. I really hope we actually listen to these, um, these elders. Auntie Esme stated it's very important for self deter, this, uh, the voice to parliament, coming out with a yes vote is very important for self defer, determination. Eighty-three per cent of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people all over Australia are voting yes. Unfortunately, Auntie Linda Bamblett, who's the CEO of Vaxel, was unable to attend today, as we've heard. However, she stated that Vaxel, which is situated in Northgood, were also not consulted about Darabben's position on the voice referendum. Therefore, I believe it is vital that Darabben does more consultation and supports the voice in order for all Indigenous organisations and community members to have their say. We need to listen. At the upcoming referendum later this year, I will certainly be voting yes in favour of recognising Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples in the constitution, and I sincerely hope you all do too. Sitting on the fence for such an important matter is not what councillors were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriatus. Uh, councillor Lawrence, as a secondor to the amendment, would you like to speak on the item?
Um, yes, thanks, uh, Mayor Williams. Um, look, I think there's some, there's important principles and historic things that are unfolding in Victoria. Um, we know about, we already have a voice, the Peoples Assembly, First Nation, First Peoples, First Nations Peoples Assembly. I was privileged to be there with the local briefing with councillor Rennie and hear the variety of opinions about how that process will unfold. But people are all united and people are decent to each other i- in the Victorian Aboriginal community about going forward and going forward with hope. The yes voice is a national voice to the Canberra, which is a very cold and difficult place. So we actually have a voice in Darabben, which is Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. We have a Victorian voice, which I don't believe we've consulted enough. And then, most importantly, we all stand on the land of the traditional owners. And we haven't heard them. So, uh. Uh, this process, we need to be more robust. I mean, we had a very bad situation with a parking policy, with eighty-five people consulted on the web. We should have embraced consultation with all three voices that we're connected to and the organisations in this city. So I would say, um, we should halt doing any decision, no, yes or neutral, till we've done our consultation properly.
Thank you. Do I have any other councillors that would like to speak?
Through you, mayor. Can I just, uh, if I may, just clarify with the mover and the secondor, the action they want after this? Can I just suggest for clarity, and this is on governance advice, that you had a point five that seeks a report back to council once the advice from the Wurundjeri Wurundjeri Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation has been received and from the First, uh...
The First Peoples Assembly, yes.
First Peoples Assembly.
At the next council.
The mover and secondor would agree to that. I think that makes sense in terms of instructing your administration what to do next.
Absolutely.
So our officers would just make those amendments and put that on screen? Just wait a moment? Can you kindly read that and you're happy with that wording?
Yep, so it says, "Requests a report be provided to council, um, at the next council meeting, um, upon receiving advice from Wurundjeri Wurundjeri Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation and the First Peoples Assembly on the upcoming voice to parliament referendum." Um, yes, could, I would also like the report to include, um, the Indigenous organisations within Darabben as well. So, "Requests a report be provided to council upon receiving advice from Wurundjeri, from the First Peoples Assembly of Australia and, um, the Indigenous organisations within Darabben." Oh, well, yeah, can we get, can we put a full point, um? Five, yeah, it's, it's, yeah. Yeah, so, um, a point fi, that would be a point six. A point five would be, uh, request, um, seeks con, uh, the advice of the Indigenous organisations within Darabben about, uh, the voice to parliament referendum. Thank you. Uh, yes, thank you.
Councillor Hannan?
Um, thank you, ma'am. Um, I've actually wanted to ask a question, um, given this has just come up now. Would the effect of, um, these amendments be that council management or officers will directly be taking responsibility for this consultation? Or would it be through the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee or some other way? I mean, my question is, what is the effect of, of these amendments? Who is actually doing the consulting and reporting back to council? Thank you.
Uh, through you, mayor, I think we'd have to ask the mover what their intent is to get clarity on that.
Uh, thank you. So thanks for the question. Just in regard, just like, um, the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee provided a report to council, um, I think it would be appropriate for the Indigenous organisations as well as Wurundjeri, Wurundjeri Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation and the First Peoples Assembly to provide a report so that way, um, uh, we can, or a statement, uh, and that way we can bring it all to council to actually make a decision on the matter.
So, sorry, through you, mayor, I think we're seeking clarity from that question. And, and I'm certainly seeking clarity as the administration. Are you wanting officers to write to them to ask them to make a submission or?
Uh, yes, to write, to make a statement, um, about the voice to parliament.
I think it was trying to, through you, mayor, I was trying to answer councillor Hannan's question and get clarity. That the, the motion asks officers to seek the advice of those organisations and, and if this was passed, we would write to those organisations asking if they'd like to make a statement to council on their position.
Councillor Hannan?
Thank you, mayor. I'll, look, I, um, I'll just speak quickly on this amendment. Um, yes, sorry.
So you're, Tom, uh, councillor Hannan, you're speaking on the amendment at the moment? Or is it a question?
Specifically, I'd like to speak...
Okay, thank you.
Uh, actually against the amendment. Um. Look, I, I support much of the prin, principle of the amendment, but I'm actually speaking against it because I feel that, on the question that I just asked, I think it's, um, impractical. It undermines the position that, that DAC, the Aboriginal Advisory, Aboriginal Advisory Committee has. It's, that's actually their role and they have been doing that. Um, I think this undermines their role if, having DAC spent months just doing this consultation, that the organisation effectively, or the, the management effectively takes over that process. Um, there are, I don't know the exact number, more than a dozen, um, Indigenous or Aboriginal-controlled organisations in Darabben. It's not named here which ones would be in and out. Um, I, I think, yeah, for those reasons, um, I'm, I'm, sorry to say, I can't support this amendment. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Uh, are there any other councillors who would like to speak on this amendment?
I'm sorry.
Councillor Dimitriatus, sorry?
Just in response to that, I also wanted to add to seeks the advice of all Indigenous organisations within Darabben. I mean, I don't think ten or so is that many, if that, if that is. So I think if we have the word "all", we can ask their advice.
All, as in all of Australia?
No, in Da, within Darabben.
In Dar, okay, sorry. And you want this to come back by the next council meeting?
Oh, well, we're going to read that.
Okay. Councillors, are there any other councillors who would like to speak on this amendment? I've had councillor Dimitriatus speak on the amendment, councillor Lawrence has spoken on the amendment, and now councillor Hannan has spoken on the amendment. Are there any other councillors who would like to speak on the amendment? Councillor Newsham, and then I've, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'll just speak briefly, um, we'll be against this amendment as well. Um, so I fully respect the leaders that have joined us today. And I also fully respect the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. They have given us their advice. We're Darabben council, it's our responsibility, it's our responsibility to listen to the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. And I note from their report, not every Aboriginal person nor every Aboriginal body will have a position. Some people will vote yes, some will vote no, some will be undecided and others disengaged. The diversity of views within the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community must be acknowledged and respected with time for deliberation and reflection. I've been in the meetings with the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. I've been on that committee for six years while I've been a councillor and I, I respect the position that they've take, that they've taken and I believe that it does respect, reflect the diversity of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community in Darabben. I wish that, um, personally, that we were here with a yes motion, but I would not disrespect DAC.
Thank you, councillor Newsham. Any other councillors who'd like to speak on the amendment? Councillor Rennie?
Mayor, if I might, I have a question which has come up because of the lateness of this amendment, which relates to what would ha, what will happen, um, sorry, to the community engagement and education work that would have flown, would, would flow naturally from the recommendation of DAC?
The initial recommendation?
Should, should, should the motion as written in the agenda be passed tonight that would set in place a number of education and community activities? Uh, what would the effect of this amendment be on those activities?
Through you, mayor, uh, we wouldn't undertake those activities as those have been deleted wi, um, in the amendment, which was the original part three of the motion. Read it, I might, that's, I'm getting a yes from my general manager, so we wouldn't undertake it.
Thank you, I will speak. Um, and I'm going to speak against the amendment whilst noting, um, that there were probably some elements here that I think there were other ways of achieving. And in particular, councillor Dimitriatus has a motion that's still on the table um, to come back to this council in August, which actually deals with some of these matters. And those matters could be dealt with, uh, in August.
I'm sorry, mayor, point of order, that's incorrect.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to accept your point of order.
I haven't even stated what it is. So you can't just accept a point of order without actually... So you can't just accept a point of order without actually just me getting up and saying point of order.
You're interjecting.
And that's what a point of order is, it's an interjection.
What was your point of order?
The point of order is 10.1G, it's misleading and a false statement. Councillor Rennie said that the amendment, the motion that's coming in August will actually address some of these issues. However, the point is that this, the current officer recommendation already puts a stance on council, so the actual voice, the actual recommendation will be, will be void, the norm will be void in August. So this is basically the last chance to actually have a stay, a position on, on the voice.
I heard councillor Rennie say that these, this amendment this evening can be addressed with the notice of motion that is coming up next month. The notice of motion, the, the, the item that we have this evening is just a recommendation from our Aboriginal advisory.
Sorry, Mayor, it's not a recommendation, it's council's position. I highly recommend you read it.
Well, thank you councillor Demetriatus. I'm, I'm gonna go back to, no, I'm gonna go back to councillor Rennie and councillor Rennie, you have still one minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an opportunity tonight to both respect the advice that DAC has provided to us and for which we have thanked them and to recognise that the motion that has been deferred to August will come back to us in August and will provide an opportunity, not flying by the seat of our pants and looking at things and reading them for the first time, but actually taking a more considered approach. And that means that we will be able, if we pass...
Councillor Lawrence, what's your point of order?
Misleading and disrespectful comment. We've had 230 years to consider the matters here.
Councillor Rennie?
I am not here to try and score points. I'm here to try and find a pathway forward which respects and honours the longstanding commitment that we have with the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee, while also moving us to a point where unanimously as a council, we can support our community to achieve justice for First Nations communities in this country, which as councillor Lawrence says, is well overdue. This should not be something riddled with this kind of conflict in a council where, as far as I know, every single councillor supports yes on a personal level. So how councillor Demetriatus has managed to politicise something and turn something where we have consensus
Point of order.
into this type of angry showdown.
And your point of order is?
10 point, it's all of them, 10.1E, it's offensive, 10.1G, it's misleading and a false statement. This is not a political, a political anything. I don't know why councillor Rennie is claiming politics when this is actually a statement of, of supporting our First Nations people.
Okay, thank you councillor Demetriatus. Councillor Rennie?
Mayor, with your indulgence, I wonder if I might have another 30 or 40 seconds, given that I've now been interrupted three times.
It's still counting down. I'll give you another 20 seconds because you're right, it was 15 seconds prior.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really difficult because I don't want to walk out tomorrow, walk out tonight and find tomorrow that members of the DAC have resigned and I think that is what quite possibly will happen. And I think that will happen not only to people on DAC who are unsure about whether to support the voice, yet I think there will also be resignations from people on DAC who support the voice. Because there are people on DAC who support the voice, but unanimously they arrived at a position. And I think we need to honour that position and I have the highest level of respect for the elders who have come here tonight to speak to us. Auntie Muriel, auntie Esme, I've known you both in one way or another for years. I hear you. I want voice, you want voice. I believe it's a pathway forward.
Thank you, councillor.
This is not the path to get there.
Thank you. Any other councillors who'd like to speak on this amendment? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor. I really think it's important that we come out of this meeting today with a unanimous position. I think that's absolutely crucial that we do that. And therefore, I want to foreshadow an amendment that would include what the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee has proposed to us, because they are our voice in, in the Darabben context. And also to ensure that some of the work that was to be undertaken in terms of informing the community can actually take place. But also as a way of forming a unity position on this, because I think it's fundamental.
Okay, so you're explaining, do you have a, an amendment?
Yep, I'm just foreshadowing this amendment. And then the amendment that I'm foreshadowing, yep, would be that the extra points that councillor Demetriatus has included, they are points two, three, five and six, be incorporated as part of the, the, the recommendation that we have here before us. Like that, we can actually hopefully arrive at a consensus position as a council. So I foreshadow that.
Okay, so because this is getting messy and foreshadowing, we're just going to deal with the amendment first. And if councillor Demetriatus's amendment gets up, then that will be the new substantive motion. If it doesn't, then we'll come back to councillor Greco and then we'll do your amendment. But we'll deal with the initial amendment that we have at this point in time. So if there are any other councillors who would like to speak to councillor Demetriatus's amendment? Councillor McCarthy?
Sorry, Mayor, can I just, there's an error in the actual motion, in the recommendation that's on the board. Point one should actually remove as council's formal position on the matter because we, I don't believe that we are ready to have a formal position on the matter. We need to be consulting, so could that be removed? Thank you.
It's a little bit late now because we've actually been debating, but we've actually had yourself speak on it, councillor Lawrence, councillor Hannon, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, councillor Greco. And now we're, we're making further amendments.
I'm sorry, it's not a further amendment, it was in the original email.
It can be removed? Oh, okay, no problem. Apologies councillor Demetriatus. Councillor McCarthy, over to you, to speak on the amendment.
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I'm just going to flag that I'm going to abstain on the amendment. I do so because I'm interested to see what councillor Greco is putting forward. My hope is that this council will find a unanimous way forward. There is a fundamental process flaw that we have here tonight though, which is that the actual motion that we're debating and the actual, the original motion had undergone a process of engagement and consultation with DAC and with the DAC chair and DAC members. To then not go through a process of engaging with DAC in relation to variations on that, I think is actually counter to the approach that we've taken with DAC over many years. And I know and I acknowledge the wonderful elders and leaders that we have in our gallery here tonight, some of whom I've worked with on DAC and know, and uncle Phil in particular, I've had a long history with. So I have enormous respect and with every single thing that they've all said. And I'm a strong supporter of the voice and there's no question there. I want Darabben to turn out the highest voice vote in the country and I want us to be extraordinarily proud of the place where we live. But I want this council to be clear in its unity in terms of respecting our local voice here. And it's really difficult when we talk about our commitment to the Uluru Statement of the Heart and I can see it just out there in the corridor. And we talk about self-determination, which we have supported as a council now in this, in this city of Darabben for over two decades through DAC. The last thing we want to do is undermine that role. So I'm going to abstain from the amendment and look forward to seeing what councillor Greco puts forward in a way of trying to create unity on this council on a matter that should not see us divided. And if councillors need to take some time to adjourn and have a discussion, Mayor, I would encourage them to do so. But I would encourage all councillors to get behind something which I think we can stand tall and stand proud together with all of our community leaders and also our DAC members and feel like we've done the culturally safe and appropriate thing tonight.
Mayor, can I suggest that we have an adjournment, please?
Well, I'll just go to councillor Lawrence and then we can have a quick adjournment, if that's okay? Thank you. Was that a question, councillor Lawrence? Because you were the seconder and you've actually spoken on the actual amendment.
Yeah, I've just got a process question because of things that have been raised by councillor Rennie and councillor Greco. Is it possible to have on the screen councillor Greco's foreshadowed motion? So we're...
No, because we're in, we're right in the middle of this amendment and we can't do another amendment on top of that.
Is it possible for him to submit it to us so that we can accept it?
No, because we're dealing with one amendment at a time which needs to be voted on. Thank you.
Mayor Williams, can we suspend the, the meeting for five minutes at this point in time?
I'm gonna go to a vote in reference to the amendment and then I'm gonna go to an adjournment and then we can have a discussion regarding your amendment, if that's okay? I think that's the best way forward. So when we come back, we're also having, we can have that discussion. So we'll have maybe a 10-minute adjournment. So if there are no further speakers on the amendment...
I have the right of reply.
On the amendment?
That's correct.
I don't believe it's an amendment you do, no. So I'm gonna ask for that to be put to vote. All those in favour in reference to the amendment? Councillor Demetriatus and councillor Lawrence and all those against? I have councillor Hannon and all those who are abstaining? Councillor Rennie, councillor Hannon, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Greco and councillor Williams. So that item has lost and we'll go back to the original recommendation and we'll take a 10-minute adjournment. And I believe that councillor Greco is going to put forward a foreshadow amendment to that. Thank you.
[Music]
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 Councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence, councillor McCarthy, councillor Hannon, can you please come back into the chamber? Officers, can you kindly tell me when we're back online? Thank you. Jimmy? Thank you for viewers online. We have now only on to our first report, which we're going back to the substantive motion. And I believe that councillor Greco has an amendment on that item. Councillor Greco?
I have hopefully a unity amendment.
Thank you to our officers who have now put that up on the screen. When we get councillors have a chance to read that, I need to get a seconder for that item. Councillor Dimitriatus?
Thank you, mayor. I just had a question in regards to, so now it would be that the CEO makes arrangement to implement DAC's recommendations. DAC's recommendation is that council doesn't have a stance. So what happens there?
This would be in page six of the report, which would be actioning the three key action areas listed by the DAC, I believe. I'll ask business minister to help me. Which is support Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people over the next few months. Working with DAC to ensure there are opportunities for facilitated information sessions. Working in partnership with key organisations to facilitate and support health and wellbeing. And providing support to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander staff and volunteers. And then other actions in relation to encouraging the whole Darabbin community to inform and educate themselves. So we would implement those actions, which are about supporting generally participation in the referendum.
Councillor Dimitriatus?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to ask councillor Greco if he could actually just make that clear in his amendment to say that the arrangements to implement DAC's recommendations, which are the actions, not necessarily the action to not have a stance.
I don't know if you can ask councillor Greco directly, but it can be done through our officer.
I think it's implicit, you know. But I'm happy as long as we get...
I don't think it's implicit, so I'm requesting that you make it clear that it's about the actions rather than the stance.
Perhaps it could wait to implement the actions recommended by DAC. I don't know if our officers catch that.
You may want a seconder first so that the mover and seconder can agree to these amendments. I'm not sure we've got a seconder yet. Have you, mayor?
Do I have a seconder? Councillor McCarthy?
So you've got a seconder and now you want to change it a little bit just with the agreement of the mover and seconder.
I did see councillor McCarthy, I'm sorry, first.
So I think you just said to implement the actions recommended by DAC in part three.
Sorry councillor Lawrence, do you have a comment that you need to make or a question? Councillor Lawrence?
I'm telling you to check your unconscious bias, mayor.
My unconscious bias? I'm the chairperson and I have the ruling. And as I said, if you have a question, you can ask a question. I saw councillor McCarthy when we were asked who would be the seconder and I saw councillor McCarthy put his hand up as the seconder.
And I'm just pointing it out for you. It's a free lesson.
Thank you for pointing it out to me councillor Lawrence. Councillor Greco?
Thanks, Mayor Williams. Look councillors, what I've put up there is incorporating the previous components, all the components of the previous amendment. And to incorporate that with the advice that we have received from DAC.
Can you kindly stop councillor Greco? I believe that councillor Lawrence is obviously speaking. Do you have something to say councillor Lawrence? Can you kindly stand as this is a council meeting?
I'm waiting for the amendment.
Can you kindly stand if you're going to ask a question? If you don't have a question and you don't have anything else to say, can I ask you to please keep quiet?
Mayor Williams, I'll take that comment to keep quiet as an insulting and offensive comment. I'm waiting for me when I can speak to this substantive motion.
Fantastic. When councillor Greco has finished speaking, then I will go to you and ask for you to ask your question. Thank you. Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Williams again. As I said, I've tried to put up an amendment which incorporates both the the advice that we've received from DAC. DAC in a sense is the voice, our voice, to our council. And also the points that were raised by councillor Dimitriatus in terms of getting the positions of these various other organisations. And that then a report comes back to council for council to consider all that information. Councillors, this is such an important issue that we need to have a unanimous position councillors. And therefore that's why I've made the attempt in terms of trying to reconcile the various positions that are there. Because if we don't have a unanimous position councillors, we'll be sending out the wrong message to our community. And I think that what we've got there, it may not be perfect, but what it does, it actually puts in course certain actions about informing our community. And I'm very concerned about our ethnic communities and getting enough information to them to make the right decision about the referendum. And so this motion gets that work going. It's a really, really complex issue. And I also recognise that within the Aboriginal community and that there are various positions within the community. And we have to be respectful to acknowledge that. I know for example in the Italian community, we don't all see eye to eye on many things. So we expect the Aboriginal community to have one view, but they have various views. Because we know that the issue of the constitution is a complex issue in the sense that the instrument of the constitution for some represents invasion and represents dispossession. And whilst others also correctly also say that we need some recognition in the constitution, notwithstanding that the constitution still has lingering race clauses within it which are also questionable. So you can see how the issue is very, very complex. It's good that we get information on it and it's good that we start that process. And it's good that we come out of this meeting with a unanimous position on the motion that we have put up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do I have another councillor to like to speak on the item? I believe councillor McCarthy, you're the seconder, if you'd like to speak on this item.
I reserve my right for the moment.
No problem. Any other councillor? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, mayor. I'll be brief and I just raise the same issues as in the previous amendment with this amendment. Again, I support almost all of it in principle, however, I think it actually undermines what it's supporting in the first line. So I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Williams. I'd like to thank councillor Greco for bringing forward this amalgamated motion. And I'd like to thank DAC for their very detailed work, because the three actions are very important as we have this discussion. This is basically a matter of principle of consultation for this council that we consult with all the three voices that we're deeply connected with. For some of us, we're connected with other voices who are now part of our mainstream parties and who live in this city as well and represent the whole northern region. So our obligations aren't to consult with one voice or a mini voice as Dutton wants us to it. Our obligations as non-Indigenous people is to consult at all levels, because this is a national change. In Victoria, we already have our voice, an elected group of people who have gone for the second election. Many are actually connected to Darabbin, Troy Austin and others are participating in those processes. So the point of walking with the Indigenous people is the point of including them robustly, genuinely... robustly, genuinely and regardless of our views. So this motion puts us onto a proper consultation.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Councillor Rennie?
Thank you Mayor. Your indulgence, I'd like to ask councillor Greco if he'd accept a small change to this which would make it supportable by me. And that would be 2.4, the second half of that point. The first half is to seek a formal position for Warundrie, which is similar to 5 and 6. And then it says and then Darabben council can decide on an official position. Could we remove the words and then Darabben council can decide on an official position on the voice? Because it doesn't sit correctly there, given that points 5 and 6 also seek the opinion of others. And then point 7 is that we have a report. So if we could remove that, thank you. If you would accept that still being your amendment.
Does the mover and second accept that slight amendment?
It's a change to the amendment.
Councillor Greco has accepted it. Has councillor McCarthy?
Thank you councillor Greco.
Thank you. Can our officers kindly please do those slight amendments? Thank you. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak on the item now or would another councillor like to speak on the item?
Thank you, I will. This has been an extraordinarily difficult debate. I think it's a debate that we didn't have to have if our process had been better. And I really thank all of those members of our community and particularly elders who came to speak to us tonight. I've heard nothing but passion here tonight for justice for First Nations people. A recognition of over 200 years of invasion, colonisation, disposition and violence. And that we have a responsibility as a nation to correct past wrongs. And that those are not just past wrongs, in fact, they are ongoing. And I think there is a significant feeling around this table that we would like nothing more than to see the voice be successful and the voice be loud and effective. And for it to change the course of the way in which this country engages with First Nations community and the place that they have here. I still remain ambivalent, but I'm going ultimately, I think, to support this because we need to find a pathway forward and I hope that we can find a pathway forward that doesn't actually result in us doing damage tomorrow. And that's going to be pretty difficult because I still believe that this will do damage to our relationship with the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee. And I think we need to acknowledge that, that in trying to find a pathway forward, this is pretty imperfect and that there was not going to be anyone who came away from tonight feeling like a winner. And that's a great shame. And I'd just ask all councillors to reflect on the way in which we go about this kind of business so that we don't end up with these messy and unnecessary debates when in fact we are so united. This is not a council where people are split down the middle and we've got no supporters and yet this is, you know, the potential. So in the interests of finding a way forward, I will support this. And it's a great shame that really probably tomorrow I'll have to speak to members of the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee and apologise. And that shouldn't be the case.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Councillor McCarthy is a second and he's requested to... No problem. Can I just finish speaking first? And he's reserved his rights to speak. But because we've been on this item for over an hour, I'm going to ask if there's any councillors who like to speak against the amendment. And then I'm going to go to councillor McCarthy and then I'm going to put it to vote.
I'm sorry Mayor, I would like to speak on this particular amendment.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
And then I'm going to councillor McCarthy and then I'm going to put the item to vote. So councillor Demetriatus?
Thank you Mayor. I will actually be supporting this amendment because it incorporates what we've heard today. And that's that we need to seek the advice of the Indigenous organisations within Darabben, the First Peoples Assembly of Victoria and the Warundrie Warung Cultural Heritage Corporation before we actually make a stance of a no stance, of not having a stance. So I will be supporting this. I think the actions recommended by DAC are quite relevant. And we can still be informing the community while also on factual matters, while also receiving the advice from these important organisations before we actually make a stance. So the issue was that Darabben council was going to come out with a stance of not having a stance. And that's the problem, I believe. In 2019, council proudly signed a statement of commitment to traditional owners and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. This commitment, which is still effective today, embodies the Uluru statement from the heart and acknowledges the powerful call for justice, truth-telling, Makarrata and a voice. Therefore, it would only make sense that Darabben council support the Voice to Parliament referendum because it will implement the Uluru statement from the heart. And it recognises that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples should be in our constitution, in the Australian constitution, through an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander voice. Otherwise, we as Darabben council will be turning our backs on this commitment that we've already made to traditional owners. Tonight, we've heard from many members of the public, from highly respected elders, from members of the First Peoples Assembly, from Indigenous organisations that operate in Darabben and from members of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community about the importance of council not sitting on the fence, as this is effectively a no vote. It will be extremely disappointing if such a progressive council like Darabben does not unite and support an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander voice, particularly since many other Victorian councils, including the city of Melbourne, Marybeck, Ballarat, Moonee Valley, Whittle Sea we've just heard as well, have all come out in support of the voice and began advocacy within their communities many months ago. Therefore, I cannot, I won't be sitting on the fence and I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor McCarthy? No, only because we're running out of time and I apologise councillor Messina, as I said. I'm only going to speak to one more person and then councillor McCarthy. Thank you.
Thanks Mayor. In speaking tonight, I just want to actually give voice to what DAC has told us is important. And I think it's important to bring it back to that advice that council received, which will affect, be put in practice straight away should this motion be passed. I'd like all councillors to consider this motion in the context of what it will deliver for us as a council right now. But not what will deliver for us, but in fact what it will deliver as DAC has outlined to support Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who should be at the centre of all of our considerations here this evening councillors. To be honest, I have found this whole debate to be potentially culturally unsafe for a lot of people. And I would just note that it's absolutely critical that we put that at the core of our work as a council. So assuming that this motion does pass, the endorsement of the actions that are listed above, sorry, listed in the item. And we'll see council support Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people over the next few months as the referendum campaign plays out. It'll see council encourage the whole of the Darabben community to inform and educate themselves about the Voice to Parliament and support them to do so. It will also see council continue to work towards truth-telling and stand up to racism as this is the foundation for progress towards self-determination and treaty. There are a whole range of actions that sit beneath those three points that I've just outlined councillors. I would encourage you, if you have not read this report and anyone that's watching or listening tonight, to pay close attention. It's on pages six and seven of the council agenda. It is absolutely critical that we focus on what council now will do and should do and must do in line with DAC's recommendations. And that is to get people to vote, to participate, to understand, to be culturally safe, to support cultural safety, to elevate the voices of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, First Nations voices in our community. They're the voices that we should be listening to, not the nine of us. They're the voices that should be at the core of this issue. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to put that item to vote and which will be the substantive item if it gets passed. So all those in favour? That has been carried? No, it hasn't, I apologise. Councillor Demetriatus, councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams. And councillor Newton, do you object or abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you. I'll need to now make that to go to vote again. But before we do, I'll go straight to cancel resolution for this now to be the cancel resolution. So I'll now...
Mayor Williams, just one small point, Indigenous needs to be capital I.
Okay. Councillor Lawrence, did you have a question? Move the motion for it to be the cancel resolution? Okay, so councillor Lawrence is moving the motion for the cancel resolution. Do I have a second, councillor Demetriatus?
Can I just get clarification? We already have a mover for the motion.
Oh, okay. Because I was told that we probably need to make it as a cancel resolution.
No, the amendment has been passed and now we have to vote on this substantive motion unless there's further debate, which we probably don't need.
Okay, so...
Can I just also seek some clarification from our officers?
Before we do that, I need to extend time. So do I have a member, councillor McCarthy? Do I have a second, councillor Messina? All those in favour? That has been passed to extend cancel time.
Mayor, if I could, and it may seem minor to some, but it was quite correct that Indigenous should have a capital. But more commonly, we don't, we use the words Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander, I think. Can I just get clarification from our staff as to whether it would be preferable to change the word Indigenous to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander organisations within Darabben, which I think is more correct?
Something as minor as that, I think, can be clarified and can be cleaned up.
I think if we could change that, if I'm correct in thinking that's...
So the correct wording can be right, as long as we've got the main meaning of what we want for this amendment, I think is the main part. And then I think we should move on. Are you okay with that councillor Greco? Okay, thank you.
Just a question.
Sure councillor Lawrence?
Given this is about a...
Can you kindly stand?
If we could just get some advice from the officers in regards to the terms Indigenous, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander. I believe it's in the Commonwealth style guide.
Sure. Officers, do we have? I don't believe, is it possible? We'll have to take that on notice and they'll have to get back to you on that councillor Lawrence. Thank you very much. We'll move over to the next agenda item we have this evening.
Sorry Mayor, we still need to vote on the motion.
We need to vote on the substantive motion moved by councillor Rennie and seconded by councillor Hannan.
We'll move to the substantive motion, sorry councillor Rennie. And councillor Hannan, I believe, was the second in that. All those in favour? That has been carried? No, it hasn't, I apologise. Councillor Demetriatus, councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams and councillor Newton. Abstaining, thank you. All right, we'll move over to the second item for tonight. We've done extension of time, thank you. Okay, option to retain trees in Gladstone Avenue, Northkirk. Do I have a mover on that? You have a conflict? No problem?
Yes, just occurring conflict as noted earlier. Thank you.
Thank you for all those in the gallery that... Thank you, appreciate your time. Thank you. Okay, if you're not leaving me, are you? Give my love to your other half, please. Okay, councillors and officers, the item number two, do I have a mover in reference to that? Which is to retain trees, options to retain, sorry, retain trees in Gladstone Avenue, Northkirk? Do I have a mover on that item? No, if that's not the case, then I will have to ask for that item to be lapsed and we'll go to the next item. Councillor Greco, thank you. Do I have a second on the item? Councillor Lawrence, thank you. Councillor Greco?
Thank you Mayor Williams. Again, this is another issue that's been faced by council in regards to finding options to retain trees at Gladstone Avenue in Northkirk. If councillors have read the report, this is a fairly exhaustive report that looks at all the various options regarding these trees that are in this street. The background is, as is mentioned in the report, that the council has an obligation under state legislation to ensure that the trees do not touch the power lines for safety reasons. And that the council has an obligation to prune the trees where possible. Where this is not possible, then council has to look at other options. In the report, as has been mentioned, many options have been considered. And I thank officers for the exhausting nature of looking at all the possibilities. And as a result of examining all the possibilities, there was no other option than to remove the trees. Which is quite unfortunate because I know that residents in that street are very attached to the trees and that they would not like them to be removed. But legislatively and for safety reasons, which is connected up with the legislation, is that we cannot allow the trees to continue to stay there because of the fire risk that could take place and for the other safety reasons. So the options that were examined, some are extraordinarily expensive. One option that was examined was undergrounding the overhead power lines, which would cost over half a million dollars, which is not a viable option. I'm informed by our officers that the trees may have a life of five to 10 years and that then would need to be replaced in five to 10 years. I believe what the officers have come up with, difficult as it may be, is the only way forward. And all I would say is that when the trees are removed and this motion is passed, that the officers establish good communication and good consultation with people who are affected from Gladstone Street to ensure that the replacement trees meet their satisfaction and that like that we could actually move forward on this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor, obviously it's well covered by the officer's report. I just would ask whether the selection of the new species, has that already gone through resident consultation?
Officers? Has it gone through community consultation?
Through you Mayor, yeah, that's correct. Community consultation for the new street species was determined about 18 months ago with residents of the street.
Okay, thank you, yeah. So that's obviously very substantive trees that have a very long lifespan. So that's obviously what the residents there are seeking. So happy to support the officer's recommendation.
Excellent. Councillor Demetriatus?
Thank you Mayor. I cannot support this motion. Energy Safe Victoria has on many occasions pointed out to Darabben the various engineering considerations that could be used. And I quote, "to minimise or eliminate the need for pruning or removing trees, including but not limited to the application of conductor covers, installing a real bundle cables, alignment of existing overhead electrical lines or placing the electrical lines underground." The officer report presented to us fails to discuss the options regarding application of conductor covers and if this could have been a potential solution. Instead, Darabben is rushing in chainsaw first by stating, "if supported, the three trees in Gladstone Avenue would be removed immediately." Energy Safe Victoria's letter to Darabben council confirms that Energy Safe Victoria did not instruct or demand Darabben to prune or remove the trees, as Energy Safe Victoria does not have that authority to do so as section 86 of the Act. Instead, Darabben has chosen to meet compliance with the code for minimum clearance by cutting down the trees. In May 2023, Darabben wrote to Energy Safe Victoria, in part noting that after Black Saturday bushfires, clearance requirements were increased. Energy Safe Victoria replied rightfully, pointing out that this argument is nonsensical and changes did not relate to low-risk locations such as Northkirk. In addition, Darabben officer's report does not provide any significant advice from city power and again, makes no reference to one of the possible engineering solutions of a covered conductor. With these missing aspects and the nonsensical arguments presented to Energy Safe Victoria, I personally do not have confidence that Darabben has the internal expertise in electrical engineering and power distribution, nor has explored all options engaging suitable experts. For these reasons above, I will not be supporting this resolution. I will be voting against it.
Thank you. Because we're quite restrained regarding time, I'm going to put that item to vote. All those in favour? I have councillor Greco, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence and councillor Williams, councillor Newton. And all those against? Councillor McCarthy, councillor Demetriatus and councillor Rennie. That item has been passed. Thank you. Can we get councillor Hannan back into the room, please? Councillors, because of the time that we're situated in at the moment, can we do a procedural motion for 9.3, 9.5, 9.6? Oh, so we can't do 9.3? Okay, we'll do 9.3. Okay. Okay, we'll do 9.3, okay. We'll just wait for councillor Hannon to come back in the room. Thank you. 9.3, which is community complaints about a councillor policy. I have Serena O'Malley, who is here to do a submission. She'll do her submission first and then we'll go over to an mover, thank you. Thank you, Serena.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge that an amendment to the definition of complaint has appropriately narrowed its scope to align it with the standards of conduct set out in Schedule 1 of the Local Governance and Integrity Regulations 2020 in the revised policy. However, I am concerned that even where the mayor and the CEO determine at the initial assessment stage that there is a prima facie case of misconduct or serious misconduct, that there is not an immediate referral at this point to an arbiter or a conduct panel. Instead, a further unnecessary step is introduced whereby the complaint can be referred to the arbiter or conduct panel via a motion of council, via a single councillor or a group of councillors. A meritorious complaint could lapse if councillors are unwilling to make a referral for reasons which have nothing to do with the validity of that complaint. It also means that the complaint could be seen and handled by up to nine additional people, namely the councillors and additional staff, which could be confronting for a member of the public and risks the complaint being politicised. It is a poor complaint resolution practice to involve so many people. The process could also push the referral date beyond the three-month time limit for misconduct complaints. If councillors do not want to defer the policy for further examination, and I think you might have just been about to do that, but anyway, then I suggest the following be added to the motion. Where there is a prima facie case of misconduct or serious misconduct, this council delegates the mayor and CEO or deputy mayor where appropriate to make an automatic referral to an arbiter in the case of alleged misconduct or a conduct panel in the case of alleged serious misconduct. So this particular policy is a couple of years overdue. I think getting it right is more important than rushing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena, I appreciate that. I have councillor Greco, who wanted to move that item, is that right? You had your hand up before? Okay, would you like to move it?
Yeah, I'd like to move it, defer it, please, to receive some more advice based on what the member Serena has just indicated in the chamber. If we can defer it for another month, for another council briefing, please. I'd like to seek a seconder to do that.
Your second? Okay, I have councillor Messina, who would like to defer the item and come to the next council meeting. Councillor Rennie would like to second that. Do I have all those in favour for the vote? I have, it's been carried unanimously, thank you. We'll go over to the next item, which is Preston Market response to NOM on supporting market traders, 9.4. Councillor Messina as the mover?
Officer's recommendation, please.
I have a seconder in reference to that item. Councillor Greco, thank you. Councillor Messina?
Thank you. I'd wish to, at this stage, acknowledge the Save the Preston Market activists in the room. Through you, Mayor Williams, I thank the officers for this detailed report. For generations, the Preston Market has been a hub of intergenerational traders, offering a wide array of fresh produce and fostering a sense of camaraderie amongst its patrons. It is a place where the sound of laughter fills the air and people from all works of life come together to connect over their shared love for food and culture. However, we find ourselves at a critical conjuncture at the market's history. Save the Preston Market, what does that mean? It means saving the footprint. It means it must stay an open-air market, saving the essence of the market, the social and cultural value. And quintessential to that equation are the traders. This journey would have been an easy, open and transparent process. What was lacking from the onset was a master plan, a master plan, a vision from day one from the developer. And that is why I raise a NOM at this council meeting to endorse a way forward to support the traders. There are many challenges. One of those challenges, you see, the current Preston Market footprint is not entirely owned by the Preston Market development and this poses a significant challenge. If you want to save the essence of this market, we must ensure that the new development offers leases to those traders such as Athena Dully. What we truly need to save the Preston Market is a continuity plan for the building and how it keeps the traders active during the development process. If the minister decides that the businesses cannot stay open during the development of the new open-air market on its current footprint, then it is the state's responsibility to extend the market's footprint and provide state investment in the extension. Furthermore, the developer must be seen to ensure that the current footprint and its rich multicultural histories are echoed throughout the final development. Imagine a market extension that includes a corridor leading from Preston Station to High Street, symbolising the seamless connection between the past and the present. Picture an amphitheatre that celebrates artists and entertainers and bocce courts that pay homage to the history of the True Go Club that I know councillor McCarthy often speaks about. Traders need a plan, community want a plan, council needs a plan. Denying traders a lease akin to telling a homeowner they have no title to their own home, ordering them to move on, we cannot allow this to happen. Their presence and expertise are invaluable to the soul of the market. Saving the intergenerational traders at Preston Market is not about preserving the physical space, but it's all about supporting livelihoods and ensuring the local economy thrives. Priority must be given to the business continuity and protect the social fabric of the market. The traders are a critical sense of identity and connection, that is the Preston Market. The report is the way forward and will provide governance to maximise the best outcome. And if the footprint and the businesses cannot stay open, then it is up to the state government to provide investment.
Thank you. Councillor Greco as a seconder, would you like to speak on the item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Look, I support this recommendation and I support what is mentioned here in the report. I think we need to support the traders. The traders have been going through an extremely difficult period where we've had the owner of the market threaten the closure of the market, which is therefore threatening the livelihood of the traders. This alarming action by the developer jeopardises the future of hundreds of jobs there and not only the jobs at the market, but along the spine of High Street. So therefore, we need to step forward as a council to support the traders as we work through the issues associated with the market. As we know, the minister has not yet made a decision about the final position of the market. But what we do know, which is weighing heavily, I believe, on the minister, is the SAC report, which is an evidence-based report that says that the market ought to stay. Now, with the market staying and with the owner threatening to close the market and threatening therefore the jobs and livelihood of traders, we need to step in as a council and support the traders. Now, amongst the traders, there are a variety of views. Not all traders, only, I believe, a few of the traders, support the developer's proposition of bulldozing 80% of the market and having a new market. I believe the majority of the traders want the market to stay where it is. That is, they want to stay in the same stall where they are and they acknowledge that if there is a development, that there will be disruption because the market becomes a development site. That's where they will be needing support. And that's where council could work with the traders to ensure that they get the support. And I'll just end on this, saying that the traders are important part of the market, so is the community, because the market is bigger than the community and bigger than the traders, because traders come and go, community comes and goes, but the market is an entity that will stay there for a long time.
Thank you. Do I have any other councillors? Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'm sorry, I can't let that comment go, traders come and go. So there have been traders at the Preston Market that have been there for decades. They do not want to lose one day of trade. So when we put this motion forward to support Preston Market traders during a time of business uncertainty, this is a time of potential crisis. They may get served eviction notices in the next two weeks. So when we say that we are going to listen to the traders, we need to actually do that. I do not believe that traders come and go. I believe that traders should be able to continue trading. And whatever that means and whatever they ask us to do, we have to take that very seriously because I am not interested in keeping a footprint if that means that the market closes.
Thank you, thank you. To those in the gallery, we don't appreciate any remarks, particularly when we're in the middle of a debate.
Mayor Williams, I just need to seek a clarification. I think councillor Newton has taken my statement out of context. When I said that traders come and go, what I mean by that is that we've had waves of different traders in the market since it's been opened in 1970. And of most recent time, we have traders that have only been there one or two years, as with traders that have been there 30 years. So I don't want councillor Newton to take my comments, take my statement out of context. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, for that clarification. Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I just want to use a word that isn't in the motion, but I think it's implied in the spirit of the motion, which is that when we talk about market traders, we're not just talking about small businesses, in some cases, very small businesses. We're actually talking about jobs. And I want to just focus on the fact that for, you know, for the over 100 market traders and in fact, let's expand it a little bit because we know what will happen to High Street if the market was to shut down. High Street and Preston will be under significant strain, significant stress, potential devastation from the sort of impacts that would happen literally in its own backyard. We are talking about not only hundreds, but potentially thousands of jobs that are affected directly or indirectly through the supply chains into the market. And I think it's worth naming the fact that this is actually a jobs issue, not just a market traders issue. So amongst the traders themselves, some traders have a small number of people that work with them. Some have a larger number, some employ a lot of casuals. Having spoken to a number of the traders about this exact issue, a lot of their workers are local people for whom this is one or one of a couple of different jobs that they do. So this is actually a jobs issue as much as it is a traders issue. And I would hope that every councillor in your advocacy is speaking to that very point as well. There are a lot of Darabhan jobs on the line right now. I'm hoping that the minister understands that issue and that we cannot lose a single day of trade because that is when we start to lose single jobs and multiple jobs and potentially, in the case of our market traders and our High Street Preston traders. We're talking about well over 1,000 jobs that are impacted indirectly or directly through supply chains as well. So we need to focus on that message. I believe that's a message this government understands well. It talks about it a lot and I think we need to start really focusing on traders mean jobs.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Do I have any other speakers on the item? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Williams, I'd like to congratulate the councillors bringing this into the chamber regarding the traders. Preston Market is a place I've fed a family of four for many decades and I've shopped in for a long time, three decades. The traders I know, the main places I go to shop, I'm actually taking my grown-up daughter as a doctor now. I say, "That's where your vegetables come" because they went there on Saturday morning, early getting the vegetables or the meat. And my butcher's still there, my vegetable people are still there and I believe they're the highest quality in the market. But one of the great things about the market is that all the Asian spices next door in the lane. So that's the real cuisine strength of the Preston Market. It's a total Eurasian, Asian and European, Middle Eastern banquets there, ready for you to get the ingredients. So I don't have any pessimism about the vegetable and meat shops in High Street, as councillor McCarthy has. I know that they're supplying a very solid base of people in our diverse community who will keep shopping there. But we want the whole offer to stay in place and that means sticking by the footprint, that means sticking by the traders and it is personal. It's, you know, our traders are our friends, our people who fed our families for three decades.
Thank you. Councillors, if there are any other councillors who'd like to speak in opposition of this item, if not, then I'm going to put this item to vote. Okay, all those in favour? That's been carried unanimously, thank you. I'll move on to the next item, which is draft the Darabhan art collection policy.
May I suggest that if it's advisable to councillors to perhaps move some in bulk unless we need to speak to particular items just to move the session along this evening?
No, what I'll do to, so we still need movers and seconders. I'm just going to see how we go for the next couple of items, if that's okay. Okay, do I have a mover? Do I have a seconder on this item? So I'm just going to ask for the mover to speak. Unless we have somebody who wants to speak in opposition of the item, I'll let that person speak and then I'll ask for the item to be put to vote so we can get through this quicker rather than calling a special meeting, if that's okay, by most councillors. Thank you. To the mover, if you'd like to speak on the item?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I think we can be fairly brief on this item. So this is looking at the Darabhan art collection policy. So I think this is a really exemplar document. It's been looked at by Leah and the team at Bundura Homestead. It's been looked at by the panel. And basically, I think that, when I read through it today, I think that it really does reflect Darabhan, who we are. It talks about developing a collection where priority will be given to culturally and linguistically diverse artists, to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander artists and other First Nations artists and by artists living in Darabhan. I think this continues the incredible work that has happened at Bundura Homestead Art Centre over the last few years. I'm sure anyone who's been to an exhibition up there, and if you haven't been, I recommend it. Every time I go there, I see the most incredible artwork in the most incredible building and I think that we can absolutely commend the team for their incredible work over many years. And I think this policy sets us in exactly the right direction. We're working with the panel to make sure that our collection is top-notch. And I think for, you know, a council that, it is a fairly, we do have fairly limited resources for this collection, but I think what they do with them is absolutely incredible. And I think for a local council, I think we can be incredibly proud of our visual arts, everything. Thank you.
Hear, hear to that. If there's no other councillors who'd like to speak in opposition of this item, I'm now going to put that item to vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, I need to ask for another procedural motion to extension of time. I saw two hands, I think, went up at the same time, I could be wrong. Councillor Messina and councillor McCarthy, all those in favour for extension of time? That has been passed unanimously, thank you. We'll go to the next item, which is the Darabhan Municipal Emergency Management Plan. Do I have a mover on that one? Councillor Hannon, do I have a seconder? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, Mayor. So this refers to noting an emergency management plan, which has been put together by the Darabhan Municipal Emergency Management Planning Committee. Now, that committee was formed under the Emergencies Management Act in 2020. It includes representatives from emergency services, Darabhan Council, state government, community organisations and activity centre managers. It's important to note that it's actually an independent committee. It doesn't report to council reports up through to Emergency Management Victoria. Although council has quite a lot of lead responsibility areas in mitigating risks, particularly, which is particularly relevant given the serious and increasing risks of climate change and in things like coordinating relief and recovery centres. The committee, other members of the committee take lead responsibility in responding to emergencies such as extreme weather, floods or significant accidents. This committee is in business now. It's, members of this committee are out doing really valuable and important work all the time, often in the middle of the night when something goes wrong. And we know that, you know, with climate change, the risks are increasing. There's going to be more significant and severe weather incidents and more need to be prepared for those. So it's a very comprehensive plan and it's been prepared with input from Darabhan Council. I'll keep it there in the interest of time, excuse me, but I endorse this report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannon, appreciate that. If there are any opposi- If there are any oppositions in reference to this item, then I'll put this item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. I'll move on to the next item, which is the NARC and libraries naming opportunities. Councillor Greco is the mover.
I have an alternate motion.
Alternative motion. Councillor Messina, you had your hand up. Okay, we'll just wait for the alternative motion to be up on the screen, if that's okay. Sorry. Councillors, I'll just give you a moment to read that. Is that your notice, sorry, is that your alternative motion? If you can kindly confirm that. I have councillor Greco is the mover and councillor Messina is a seconder. So you might want to flip the two names around there.
Mayor, can I ask a question about the alternative motion?
Sure.
Thank you. So I know it's different to the officer recommendation. And there's a part in financial management about that you would need, if you were to rename NARC, you would need to replace remaining external and internal sciences estimated at $50,000. So my question is, how would we progress this if we don't have that money allocated? So in terms of the alternative recommendation.
Okay, over to our officers. Kylie, are you able to answer that?
Through you, Mayor. Point nine of the proposed alternate motion would undertake that. So as part of coming back to council with the outcomes of the consultation and council then considering whether you would like to name or what you would like to co-name, you would consider as part of that a phased implementation plan, which would have detailed costings within it that would support implementation in a staged way over time. That would be something that would come back to you. We certainly have within council's operating budget funds this year to undertake community engagement on both the NARC and for libraries. We think that that is an efficient way of undertaking consultation. But we would come back to you with the results of that consultation and also an implementation plan for your consideration. And you would then prioritise any funds that were required to update signage or the like as part of your ongoing council plan and budget processes.
Thank you.
Thank you Kylie. Councillors, I've just been aware that we do have a submitter online. Agostino, Agostino is a submitter this evening in reference to this item. So before we go into the debate, I'm going to go to Agostino and ask for his submission, which is a two minute submission. So thank you, welcome. Can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Thank you, your time starts now.
Thanks, Agostino Geramundo from Quebec North. So my submission is for this agenda item, obviously. It's to support, it's in fact to support the 2025 council plan. And I love its strategic direction, to be vibrant, respectful and connected. And what I'm submitting is I'm just urging our council and all councillors to embrace what I think and many believe is the true asset of this country and that's multiculturalism. One of the ways we can do this is to celebrate the achievements of our community migrants by more formal recognition, such as naming public buildings in honour of them. So I'll just give some context here. I'm a member of the State Advisory Council of Cycling, which is formerly Cycling Victoria. In this role, I took the opportunity last December to invite councillor Messina to the Australail Race, which is a race that's run at the Darabin International Sports Centre, otherwise known as DISC. I believe it's one of our responsibilities to do that as beneficiaries of these great public works. That is the sporting body. Because without, you know, all the work done by people involved at all levels, we wouldn't get to have stadiums like this. It's clear to me that councillor Messina was quite impressed with the story of DISC and the person who inspired its creation. And I wasn't surprised. I was really happy to be able to tell that story. But I knew that it wasn't a well told story. She even referenced this in a LinkedIn post after the event, which pleased me a great deal. Our community is very proud.
You have 20 seconds left.
Yep, no worries. We're very proud of this facility. It's the oldest, it hosts the oldest track race in the world. When I took her through it, I showed where a man called Joe Ciavola is honoured. And it's inside the belladry. It's my belief that this should be, his name and names of people like that should actually be on the outside of the belladry as opposed to just the name like Darabin International Sports Centre.
Thank you, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, will you just have the other points of the motion come up? You know, points one to four.
There's obviously a couple of pages, is that right?
I just need to read that again.
Mayor, I have a question when it's appropriate. Thank you.
There are parts missing.
Mayor, I have a procedural motion that we reorder the agenda. I can see this is going to be messy and there's questions. Can I move a procedural motion that we go to items, effectively put this at the end of the reports? So that we defer item 9.7 to after item 9.11 and that we hear items 9.8, 9.9, 9.10 and 9.11 in that order. Thank you. I'm just going to ask the officers, is it possible to maybe move those in items in block? Except for 9.11 because that involves a contractor?
I'd rather we didn't move in block. I think we're capable of moving through them very, very quickly.
I think you probably want to debate the item we're on now, so you need to leave yourself some time for them. I'll be guided by the mayor. The urgent one for us is 9.11, which is contract.
Sorry, Meg, I have a statement. Sorry, I'm a little bit upset. We had, we had members from our Indigenous community come here and we allowed them to make submissions and go overtime. Yet the gentleman has been waiting three and a half hours to make a submission. We cut him short.
I gave him over, I did give him over the two minutes and I wasn't sure where he was actually going with it, Lena. I, I didn't feel, and I wasn't sure where he was going with it, not, not. Well, I told him he had another 20 seconds when I actually gave him another 20 seconds after his time. What would you like me to do councillor Messina? You want me to go back and listen to him? I mean, we are running out of time this evening. I gave him overtime also.
Through you, Mayor, the urgent items for us to answer councillor Rennie's question, 9.8. We want to get the waste consultation out and going. 9.11, the contract and 10.1, so our representatives.
Alga, correct?
Yep. I'm just, sorry, Mayor, I was asked through you which were the urgent items if we run out of time. The ones that we really need to get are the ones I've just listed, which are 9.8, 9.11 and 10.1. They're the ones that we'd really like to see go through tonight if possible.
I'll adjust my procedural motion and move that items 9.8, 9.11 and 10.1 be moved forward on to the agenda.
Okay, all those in favour will put that item to vote?
We need a seconder.
No, a seconder, sorry. Councillor McCarthy will put that items to vote. All those in favour? I've got councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, sorry. We've got three urgent items that we're going to miss this evening that have to get through because they're contractual. We need to get them through. So we're asking to have them to be heard first now.
Reordering the agenda. Can you restate those items please, Mayor?
9.8, curbside waste. 9.11, the Romania's contract. And 10.1 because the conference is coming up and we need to position on it.
Are we all clear on that? Councillor Messina, are you clear on that? Yeah?
No, we're just hearing these first. We'll get back to the others if we can.
Nothing's been deferred. We've just.
These will be super fast. These three will be in no time at all.
And let's see how it goes. Yeah?
They're urgent.
Yeah, let's have a vote and see how it goes.
Well, the only other thing is that we call a special council meeting.
Or we treat them on block. We treat those urgent items on block. That's the other solution.
Well, that's why I asked before if we could do that, but we need, we need to ask.
Through you, Mayor, I'm aware there's amendment on, there's an amendment from councillor Greco on one of those, which is the curbside waste. Otherwise, you could potentially, I think you could just do the contract and 10.1 really quickly and put those to vote. And then I'll give you some time back.
Councillors, over to you. You'd like to move that to the procedural motion to bring those items forward straight away? Okay, so I have councillor Rennie as the mover. I had councillor McCarthy as a seconder. All those in favour? I've got councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy and councillor Williams to move those items now. All right, we'll go straight to 9.8. Oh, sorry. All right, all those against? I apologize councillor Lawrence, you're correct. Councillor Dimitriatis, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina and councillor Greco. Which that item has been accepted. So we're going to now to 9.8, the curbside waste services. Do I have a mover on that item? I had two councillors, I think councillor Messina was first and then councillor Greco.
I had an alternate motion.
Okay, so. Councillor's recommendation. I've already got two movers here and I'm trying to work out who was first and who was second. Okay, so councillor Messina, you are the mover. Councillor Greco, you are the seconder. Councillor Messina?
I'll second, I'll second because I'll support the officers.
Thank you, is a seconder. Councillor Messina?
Through you, mayors. I'll try to be very brief. I'd like to thank the officers and I know they're deeply passionate, extremely progressive. So they're knowledgeable and knowledgeable in curbside waste services. As a council, we welcome Minister De Ambrosio's Recycling Victoria's Economic and Action Plan. This item tonight is underpinned by this policy. Waste is a design fault with costs shifting to local council. Therefore interim rate pay, intern rate payers bear the liability. This item will allow this to be viewed as an, I'm sorry. This item would once be viewed as an item, sorry. This item would once be viewed as an item to discard and reject, throw away in a general waste bin. Today, it is a resource and asset. Once upon a time, council was only responsible to collect your one single bin and off to landfill it went. I am deeply concerned with the contamination rates that would ideally enjoy a reduction in these rates. And the monetary expense incurred by way of fines are exorbitant. In order to reduce the contaminated contamination rates, we need consumer behavioural change so that consumerism, a throwaway society we've all been accustomed to, if we continue to not address the Victorians landfill site, will be depleted and we will have nowhere to place our waste. Therefore, we need to view waste as a resource and that is what the circular economy is underpinned by. Moving forward, I'd like, I'm keen to address textile recovery, nappies and cottonsays and sanitary products, multi-unit developments, and I welcome the feedback from the community. I'm trying to keep it quick.
Thank you councillor Messina. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Just really briefly, I support everything that councillor Messina said. I'm really excited to see, to hear what our community says about this. We have the most incredible groups like Darabin Hard Rubbish Heroes. We've got people that are really, really into recycling and composting and everything else. I know for me personally, I'm really interested in seeing if we can, we can use more reusable nappies and that sort of thing. And I'm really excited to hear what the community says. And I think it's very important that we do keep things open rather than restricting how we consult. So I really support the office's recommendation. I think our community is going to come back with a lot of really good feedback on this.
Thank you councillor Greco.
I have a quick amendment in relation to point 1c. If the amendment can come up and self-explanatory. Self-explanatory, I don't need to say anything more.
Does the mover and seconder accept that?
No, we want to hear what the community says.
Okay, do you have a seconder for that item? Councillor Dimitriatis, councillor Greco, would you like to speak on that amendment? Okay, councillor Dimitriatis, would you like to speak on that item?
Yes, I just wanted to say quickly that I'm supporting this recommendation by councillor Greco because it's ensuring that we maintain annual curbside hard waste services, which I believe are quite important. And then we're only considering the options to, about potentially changing the booking service, which is a huge problem that's occurring at the moment because it's pretty much first in, first served. And the people who are disadvantaged generally don't actually, might not actually get their curbside picked up because they haven't registered on time. So I'm supporting that we maintain annual curbside hard rubbish services and we only want, we only need to be consulting on the booking service.
Mayor, a procedural motion, I put a procedural motion that this motion be put.
I had councillor Rennie's hand up.
It's a procedural motion which trumps. So I've put a procedural motion that this motion, that this amendment be put.
The mayor is able to make a determination that we haven't had enough debate on that.
Well, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I wanted to ask the officers a quick question in reference to if that's the actual case, because I thought it was going to community consultation with that also. So the question is that in maintaining the annual curbside, the report saying that it was going to community consultation, which would include all that also?
The officer's report says consult on three options. This amendment in effect means you'll only consult on option one, which is, I believe. Thank you Vanessa. So option one is just looking at the book, the spring collection, the book collection. So this would mean we wouldn't consult on the other two options on hard waste. That would be the effect of it. So the, sorry Mayor, to be clear, the officer's recommendation, one C, says hard rubbish service. In the report, it says we'll consult and engage on three different types of hard rubbish options. The effect of the amendments means you'll only consult on one of those options.
So it'll narrow hard rubbish down to only one service?
It'll narrow the consultation down, not the hard rubbish. Doesn't, none of these consultation won't impact the actual service level. There'll be a report coming back. It will narrow the consultation down to just talking about the spring collection and the booked rubbish. So you won't talk, you won't get any community feedback on the other two options in the paper, which are, you know, a booked service or a paid, a fee for service option.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm putting that item to vote in reference to the amendment of councillor Greco that's been seconded by councillor Dimitri.
Mayor, I think that you have to put the procedural motion to vote, if I'm not mistaken, before putting the amendment to vote.
So I need a mover and a seconder for the procedural motion. So I've got councillor Greco and councillor Dimitriatis. So we're now taking a vote in reference to that. All those in favour? I've got councillor Dimitriatis, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco, all those against. I've got councillor Messina, councillor McCarthy, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, councillor Hannan and I abstain. So therefore that item has now been lost?
No.
Sorry.
The item, you can continue debate on the item now.
The debate continues unaffected.
All right, now it's over to councillor Rennie to speak on the item, thank you, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm glad that we haven't curtailed debate here because I think that as keen as we are to get to all items on the agenda, it would be a mistake to not apply due diligence to the consideration of this one. And there are over 7,000 members of the Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes page who are out in our community trying to find ways to reduce the amount of hard rubbish that goes to landfill, who are deeply invested in the way in which council undertakes a hard rubbish collection and who I think would be appalled if we didn't present them with a range of options that they could provide feedback on. We have to believe that our community, particularly when it's 7,000 plus strong of engaged, interested residents, we have to believe that our community is better than ourselves, the nine of us, when it comes to providing feedback on how we might do this better, how we divert more rubbish from landfill, how we reduce costs. And so I don't want to curtail the consultation that we put out to them, I'll stop there, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Messina, do you want to speak?
I think the community will be, I think, thank you Mayor, I think the community will want a on-call service, um, because they don't wait until they exit their property to ring up in the spring to have their hard waste collected. So I think we need to give them the option to book it, um, when they want to.
Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Williams, um, I've seen, uh, when I worked at Burandara about 10 years ago, them change from the once a year to an on-call service, it works really well. So when you're moving out, when you're moving in, um, you can call up and say, you know, I need to put out this couch, whatever it is, you can do it whenever. So what it means is it really helps reduce dump rubbish in the community. I know certainly I've heard a lot of feedback from the time of year that we do it currently is that items often do get rained on and so they can't be collected. So the good thing about on-call is that it's all through the year. So I think we absolutely should give that, the community that option and hear what they think about it.
I'm gonna go to councillor Lawrence and then I'm gonna have the item put to vote.
Um, yes, I'd like to thank councillor Greco for, um, uh, raising this amendment, we're voting on the amendment, yes still, I've just got confused now. Um, look, that was very popular when we brought it back in, um, and of course I now can stand in this place being part of the biggest group, subgroup in this whole city, renters. So unfortunately, when we get jobs and have to go to whoop whoop, we just have to pack and go. And, um, people don't have the cost, don't have the capacity to get these things elsewhere. So they don't have the time, they don't even have the time for ringing up, they actually put out good stuff on the, on the, on the, on the curb. Now, in Reservoir and Thornbury, I don't know about the rest of the place, I'll press it in a bit, people actively recycle all through the year, if it's a good thing, they put free and it gets done. But the curbside collection allows people to take out a lot of things that do not fit in our wonderful three bin or four bin future. And those things are bits of concrete, those things are bits of wood, those things are a range of things. And, um, that, I think, does stop a, a lot of dumping because that is kind of building material, which we find piling up everywhere, and in Reservoir, we even have lead piling up in, dumped by governments.
All right, so we're now voting on the amendment that's in front of us. So councillors, all those in favour? I've got councillor Dimitriatus and councillor Greco and councillor Lawrence, all those against. I've got councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy and councillor Messina and I abstain. So we now go back to the the, the substantive motion, which is councillor Messina was the mover, who was the seconder on that one? That was councillor Newton. Um, I think councillor Nu- councillor Messina had spoken and
I've spoken.
And you've spoken.
Could we move a procedural motion now that it now be put?
Yep, um, all those in favour? And I need, oh, I need a seconder for the procedural motion. I don't know who had the hands up, I'll go to councillor McCarthy. All those in favour in reference to that? I've got councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina and councillor Williams, all those against. I've got councillor Lawrence, all those abstaining. Councillor Greco and councillor Dimitriatus. Now we're going to put the motion to the vote, all those in favour in reference to the motion? I've got councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Mc- Newton, councillor McCarthy and councillor Messina and councillor Williams, all those against. All those abstaining, I've got councillor Greco and councillor Lawrence, thank you.
Mayor, in the interests of being able to complete the urgent items tonight, and given that it's quite clear we won't complete everything, I'd like to move a motion to defer non-urgent items to the next month's meeting. We then are able to use the 15 minutes if we believe we can reasonably finish, we have 15 minutes in which we can deal with the urgent items.
I'm just getting some governance guidance in reference to when we adjourned and the times that we adjourned today and whether we continue going forward, how does that work now? It's we've still got until quarter past at this point in time, so we'll just push along at this moment. Um, I believe we need to go to nine eleven, which is another urgent item this evening, on road maintenance and associated services contract. Do I have a mover on that item? Councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy as a seconder, councillor Rennie?
Um, thank you, I'll get the, um, staff to put in the details, um, so we can get those online. And maybe in the interest of time, I'll start speaking, because I, I trust that that will be okay, yep. It'll be super fast, um, just to note that this is a contract to provide road maintenance services via a panel. Having a panel is really useful because it means that we don't have to go out and tender each individual project, we can directly dip into the panel. Um, it's good that, uh, this has occurred in partnership with other neighbouring councils, which means that, um, we get better value for money. The contract is for three years with a possible extension for a two-year period. Um, and I'm just using the time that it's taking to get the motion up on screen so we can all be clear what we're voting for.
It's on the small screen. Councillor McCarthy, I believe that you're the seconder in reference to that item. You'd not want to speak, you're okay and we can put this item to vote.
Uh, Mayor, I think we just need, um,
I think in the interest of transparency in contracts, it should be on the large screen.
Tender it listed on screen, but I'm happy.
It is on the small screen, it's just that my eyes aren't quite that good. There's a panel, so I just think we need to have those all.
Just to confirm, councillors, we are having a technical issue, so our live stream viewers at home can see the officer's recommendation with the tenders. Unfortunately, you can't in the room though, so we can swing this screen around so you can see it. Can you see it up there on this one?
Ms Watson, can you just read them out very quickly so that we're clear?
Certainly, um, one is Asphalt Tech Proprietary Limited, Build Bitchamill Proprietary Limited, Rabbs Paving Services P2Y LTD, Downer EDI Works, Prestige Paving, Roadsafe Ashvold and Fulton Hogan. And the second one for contract CT 202315 is Supersealing Proprietary Limited and Crack Sealing Solutions.
Councillor Messina?
Sorry, Mayor, we just need to have the other, um, there is actually
I'll, I'll read them out for you through me.
Five, um, points that include contracts, so we just need them all listed, sorry.
Um, for CT 203315, Build Bitchamill, Silman Brothers Ashfolding, Prestige Paving. Item number four, CT 202315, Events Traffic Management P2Y, Altus Traffic Proprietary, Ozroads Traffic Management and Go Traffic. For CT 202315, Image Line Marking and OmniGrip Direct Proprietary Limited, that's your full list, councillors.
Councillor Messina? I'd like to foreshadow that we, uh, procedural motion to go straight to item number, um, nine point seven. Um, I'm gonna rule because we need to deal with this item first, so we just need to vote on this because this is urgent. So can we kindly please vote on this, all those in favour, and that has been carried unanimously? We can go to nine point seven now, so we'll resume back to nine point seven.
Uh, what are we gonna do with ten point one?
Sorry, that was a mistake, we
It's not urgent, we have more time?
Uh, we got the numbers wrong, apologies, so we'll just note that for the minutes and I think the mayor can go straight to nine point seven.
Excellent.
Where you have an amendment afoot, I think.
We, we, we were at the stage where councillor, councillor Greco moved an alternate motion and I seconded.
Mayor, I have a question in relation to the alternate motion.
Sure, councillor Rennie.
Um, the question relates to clarifying what type of consultation is going to take place. Uh, it's my understanding that under this, uh, alternate motion, we wouldn't be doing any broader consultation with cold communities. I just want to make sure that I'm clear that that's the effect of this alternate motion and that people like Agostino, um, who came tonight, wouldn't be included in the consultation under this.
Um, no, no, I have to go through the officer's apologies, um.
Through, through you, Mayor, uh, if we, uh, move to recommendation six, uh, that
So, so you're telling me there's another page? Yep, there is another page, thank you.
Uh, that, that outlines, uh, who council would seek, um, seek submissions from. Uh, so that would include, uh, include peak bodies, but it would also include, uh, inviting submissions from culturally and linguistically diverse community members to help inform council's position on names that you would then like to go out to broader community consultation on.
Can I, can I, can we get that up on the screen because I can't read it, or email it to me?
I'm happy to email it. It is, it is up on the screen, but yes, we've lost the big screen.
Yeah, I can't read it there.
Feel free to come and walk forward and have a look at it, I think
Mayor, there's an urgency of time and I, I think the tactics that have been used
And I, and I, councillor Greco, as I've said, excuse me councillor Greco, as I said to councillor Rennie, please come and walk up to the front. Um, I believe it's also has been emailed to you. Um, I'll, any other councillors would like to speak? Councillor Hannon?
Um, we've spoken yet, Mayor.
Okay.
We've moved and seconded, but we haven't spoken.
I apologize, sorry. Um, councillor, councillor Greco, do you want to speak on the item as the mover for the alternative motion?
Look, what, what this motion does, it follows through with our naming policy in order to give greater visibility, uh, to both indigenous names and, and names in indigenous languages and also to give greater visibility to our, uh, cold community and names that reflect, um, the cold community. This will correct a, a, a wrong of, of the past and, uh, and create greater visibility for, uh, cold communities. Also, um, it should be noted that nearly 70% of our community is from a cold background. And, uh, but when you look at the, um, the, um, the, the, the landscape here in, in Darabben, the naming landscape, there is hardly probably no reflection whatsoever of, of the cold community within, uh, within Darabben, within its buildings, within its places and, and things like that. So this goes towards, um, achieving that outcome and, and achieving the outcome of visibility for cold communities and of course visibility for the indigenous, um, communities. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor Messina, is there a seconder which you'd like to speak on the item?
Yeah, I was gonna move this item in a whole three minutes of a speech, so I'll just start. Um, thank you, first and all, let me be, begin by congratulating to all involved in producing our 2021-2022 annual report. Darabben has now won seven consecutive gold medals. But I also want to draw my, your attention to the Darabben diversity statement on that page seven of that gold medal report. The Darabben community cherishes diversity and it values its important civic asset. Darabben City Council acknowledges the history and contributions of various communities, migrants and refugees who have made the municipality their home. Their endeavours have enriched the economic, social and cultural artistic community and civic character of the city, created a cosmopolitan locality where variety and differences are encourages. The report tonight indicates that council endorsed November 22 and April 23 a naming priorities schedule as possible priorities. This council endorsed the naming of NARC with names associated with cold and migrant communities. This discrepancy now in this report, as the officer's recommendation, troubles me deeply. The submissions made by Agostino is an example of a discrepancy. An Olympian whose advocacy led to the construction of discs, his name remains hidden within the area when, which should be rightfully adorned the building itself. I acknowledge that Darabben rests on the history of loss and dispossession afflicted upon Aboriginal people, past and present. As a council, we have elevated that by naming civic spaces in Wurundjerwurrung language. I believe Australia has yet to fully embrace the value of multiculturalism and recognizes the importance of fostering a nation that respects and values its rich tapestry. I have encountered numerous obstacles in my efforts to introduce the naming of vital civic areas in Darabben that celebrates the contribution of multicultural community. I believe firmly that the naming of civic spaces should echo our commitment in valuing all cultures. If our council truly strives to elevate, value and celebrate diversity, that it is imperative that we take action and ensure those who shape this multicultural area are not hidden but are promptly several, celebrated and recognized. We have unsung heroes that are in Darabben to, uh, in Darabben to elevate, who have contributed to shape our municipality. I also believe that multiculturalism is diluted in the word diversity, when in fact we should be elevating it. I stand before you as a daughter of a migrant born in Melbourne, Basasidmis stand people.
That's all right, we'll go and continue then, councillor Messina?
Thank you. But Basasidmis stand people who came from war-torn countries by ship, by plane, with nothing but empty suitcases filled with hope. They are Lebanese, they are Macedonians, servants, Croatians, Croatians, Vietnamese, Hindus, Sikhs, Nepalese, Chinese, Armenians, Iraqis, Iranians, Maltese, they are Italians, they are Greek and more. They are community, they are people and they are, um, they are active transport activists, biodiversity experts, mothers, fathers, union members, business owners, council officers, they are Darabben community. These six civic spaces are a symbol of hope, welcoming and belonging, a symbol of when the world was telling them, no, you can't, no, you don't belong. I want all of our young people to know that there are many unsung heroes who built this great nation and offer encouragement to those to explore their own history, their own life tapestry. So I urge councillors to embrace the true asset of this country and please, um, support this.
Thank you, councillor Rennie?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm reasonably happy to support the direction we're going in, but I'm still not entirely clear that I understand, um, and just do need clarification, that we are talking about a situation in which every culturally and linguistically diverse person in Darabben can contribute names to a bank which will actually, um, inform this process. And I say that because I found it fascinating to listen to Agostino tonight. I think he was absolutely right. And I just, because I'm seeing this and digesting it at the last minute, want to be clear that I understand that there'll be a process to establish a bank of names and that all culturally and linguistically diverse people, they don't have to belong to a group, they can contribute to that. And that then council will, you know, u- use another consultation process to allocate names. Can I, I, I'm using my two minutes, I, I know it's speech, but using it, 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 this is, uh, councillor Messina, it's not clear enough to me and I require confirmation from the staff.
To our officers, can I just get clarification that that is the case?
Through you, Mayor, in part six, we, if you were to pass as printed, we would invite submissions from culturally and linguistically diverse community members in addition to consulting with peak bodies. Uh, we would also hold a briefing with you, uh, to get your feedback on informal called groups that you'd like us to approach as well. That would help inform, uh, your decision on names that you would then like to go out and seek broader community consultation on.
Thank you, so to be clear, my Greek neighbours, my Vietnamese neighbours, my Italian neighbours will, there will be a mechanism for them to contribute names to the pool.
Yes, there will, we will do our best to make sure.
I know they may choose not to participate, but there will be a mechanism via which they could.
Correct.
Fantastic, thank you, that's great.
I'm gonna now put the item to vote because we are running out of time. Um, councillors, all those in favour? I've got councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, all those against. And councillor Newton abstaining, thank you. So that item is now the new substantive item? That we just, yep. Oh, that's been completed, sorry.
So, mayor, you've gotten. 10.1 you could potentially do in block if you.
But we also, 9.6, we apparently deferred that, didn't we?
You could actually move. So, yeah, mayor, you've got 9.10 governance report and the tabling of your report from Algarve, I think you could move those in block if.
Okay, councillors, do I have a procedural motion to move those on block? I have councillor Messina, councillor Greco to move those on block, all those in favour to move it on block.
I don't do block, I think it's bad governance.
I've got councillor, Demetriatus, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams to move those items on block. So that has been carried and those against? Councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor Hannan and abstaining councillor McCarthy. So that has been lost, sorry, that has been carried to move on block. And then we're going to put those items to vote, all those in favour? I've got councillor Demetriatus, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, councillor Hannan, all those against.
Sorry, I'm confused what we're doing now. Sorry, the council move items? So which items, can we say which items we're voting on? I'm confused.
You've got a minute. Sorry, I missed 9.9, do you want to do the procedural motion quickly again? A procedural motion quickly, mayor, to do 9.9, 9.10 and 10.1 on block.
I thought councillor Lawrence, I heard his voice. And then I've got councillor Messina.
Sorry, mayor, we are completely out of order right now. You've already passed a procedural motion. We need to vote on the motion that's on the floor and then we can deal with 9.9.
Thanks to councillor McCarthy.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so we're voting on the items that we were discussing before, which was 9.0, what was it, 9.10 and 10.1. So we're moving those items, all those in favour for those items? We've got councillor Demetriatus, councillor Hannan, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco and councillor Williams. We've got one more item left, is 9.9, which is Property Matters. Three hands in a row, I've got councillor McCarthy and councillor Lawrence. Put it to vote, all those in favour? I've got councillor Demetriatus, councillor Hannan, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, all those against. Those abstaining. Councillor Rennie is abstaining, thank you. Yep, we do have one other item, but that will have to be moved on to the next.
Can I move it in the next 10 seconds?
Yep, you can, councillor Newton.
Thank you, do I have a secondor? Yep, so it's like urgent motion, I think everyone's seen it.
Councillor Newton is mover, councillor Messina is the secondor.
That's the procedure to admit it? Okay, admitted.
So I've got councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams and councillor Demetriatus against abstaining. Councillor Hannan abstaining.
No need to talk to it, I'm just moving it and I'd like to move to a vote.
So I've got councillor Newton as a mover, councillor Messina as a secondor, all those in favour? I've got councillor Demetriatus, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, all those against. Councillor Hannan's abstaining. We have now run out of time, so we will be closing tonight's meeting, thank you.